Good evening. For the public out there, we're ending a closed session previously, so is there a motion to adjourn the closed session we were previously in?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council for Monday, February the 13th will be called to order at 7:05 PM. At this time... Okay. What would you do first? At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. Doing the invocation now. Lord, we ask that you bless each member of the council tonight. As we come together for your glory, and to work together for one purpose, for the good of our great city, we thank you for all the blessings that you have provided to us, and ask that you guide us as we work together towards peace and understanding that we all must share together. While we may not always agree, please let us do it respectfully and peacefully. In your name we pray. Amen. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan ladies.
Present.
Alderman Budge.
Here.
Alderman Peum.
Present.
Alderman Finlayson.
Here.
Alderman Litman.
Present.
Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Piper.
Present.
Alderman Arne.
Present.
Mr. City, would you please present our first item? Thank you for the promotion, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any motions to amend the agenda? Alderman Litman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to swap the order under legislative action for first readers and second readers.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, the recognition of swearing-in of Police Officer Andrew Krapf.
Mr. Krapf, if you could please join us at the front table. We have a tradition we started, which is recognizing all of our new police officers being sworn in. I've had the pleasure of swearing in over 20 people since I've been in office, and we'd like the community to get to know the members that are now serving with them. I think it's especially important that we recognize these people. It's always been hard to be a police officer, but now more than ever. So, thank you for your service and your willingness to serve the community. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with the quarterly report from the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis.
The members of the Housing Authority could please join us at the center table. If everyone could state their name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours, and we look forward to hearing your report.
My name is Deborah Johnson. My address is 193 Bertanez and Nick Way, Annapolis, 204 Zulu.
Chip Dordon. I'm at, uh, live in Harwood, Maryland.
Jackie Wells, 203 Bloomsbury Square.
John Dillon, 320 State Street, Annapolis.
Good evening again. Last month, we had our annual election, and fortunately or unfortunately, I was reappointed as the Chairperson of the Board, again.
Congratulations.
I'm sure you are aware that our interim director, Richard Walton, has resigned and left the Housing Authority as of Friday. So, what we have done with the approval of HUD is appointed Chip as the interim director for a period of 100 days. We have also developed three new committees to help solve some of the problems that we have faced with. I think Chip, you wanna carry on for me?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to come. I'm reminded that I was here not too many months ago, volunteering to go on the board, with no idea that I would be asked and sitting here with the honor of 100 days to oversee the Housing Authority. We have a provision which been in the bylaws. We just recently updated our bylaws, but the provision's been in there for many, many years, that in a unusual situation, and this clearly is, that a member of the Board can be appointed to serve in an interim capacity for a period of time with the endorsement of the HUD, which we received. This is an unusual circumstance, and I'm always reminded of when any new administration takes over, they always talk about the first 100 days. And in this case, there is only 100 days, so we're gonna try and speed things up a little bit. The reason I was appointed is that we have been unsuccessful in finding a new Chief Executive Officer for the Housing Authority. We tried through traditional approach and went nationwide. We had some good folks, but we didn't feel as a Board that we had anyone that had all of the credentials that we would like to have to oversee this authority. So, with that, we're going to reach out again, using some outside support this time, and see if we can't find the right person for this particular position. You have an agenda. I don't wanna spend a lot of time going through the finances, suffice it to say, they are what they are. We are, that's a six-month, the January is being put together, and will be presented next month, excuse me, next week. Forgive me. But I did wanna just touch on a few things, and then I'm gonna ask John Dillon, who is the newest member of our Board, to share some thoughts about the big picture of our properties, and then he's going to let me give you a couple reflections. I know you have a busy agenda, so we'll promise to be brief, but we, most importantly, are here to answer any questions that you may have. Always on our mind is the issue of our residents. That's the reason we're in business, and we are trying very hard to provide the best services we can for them. Security, we've worked very, very closely with the Mayor and this County, City Council, excuse me, around reinstitution, instituting our banning policy, around a memorandum of understanding with the city, and I think in a very positive way, we're trying in every way to be good citizens and to work closely. We elected on our own to provide some additional support to the local officials. That particular support is minimal, but it at least is a presence, five out of seven days, for at least a part of the day. We have enough money, and we have approved it through June, but at that point, we will, I don't think, based on what I know as of now, be able to continue to support ourselves with any kind of in-house security, so to speak. And again, it's a contractual relationship. We have no one on staff that does that. We have also tried to work very closely with the city regarding inspection. The bottom line is that we have had two of our properties that have been inspected and seen in a favorable light. We have four of our properties that have been inspected, and we have a lot of work to do. We're trying to work very closely. The city's been great, and trying to support us in this, but the bottom line, some of these properties are, were built in the 60s, and there's a lot to be done. So, we met this morning early, my first day on the job, so to speak, and we've come up with a game plan, which we're gonna share with the city, in order to try and correct everything that we can related to the particular properties. Overall, I think we're staying as full as we can, given the fact that when somebody moves out, we often have to completely go in and to recover and renovate the properties for our next resident. I'd like, at this point, to ask John Dillon to share with you some of the bigger-picture things we're thinking about. Come back to me, and then we'll, I always invite my fellow Board members to participate as well. John?
Well, thank you. First, I wanna thank Chip and Sandra. I've been on the Board about 90 days or so, and the amount of work they're doing with the other Commissioners is truly amazing. So, we're, basically, the Housing Authority, on a really simple level, we're your agent. The Housing Authority Corporation essentially owns the real estate. There's six properties that we outright own, two properties that we're in partnership with. So, when you look at it from a real estate standpoint, Annapolis is a very desirable place to live. The underlying land and all the properties is very valuable. The public housing residents, you can argue some properties have better amenities near them and so forth, but the underlying land is very valuable. The buildings and structures, as Chip alluded to, and I think we're all aware of, are, for the most part, there's exceptions to everything, or past what you would call your useful life. For at least a decade or so, we really stopped doing any plan of any major renovation or construction. There really hasn't been any new partnerships since two properties would come into a partnership. So, where we are now is the Real Estate Committee is a month old. There's three pieces of action that will take place next Tuesday, and they're all really important. One is, the two properties that we have a minority ownership of, with Landex and Penrose, the structure of that asset, and this is actually something that Commissioner Wells and Johnson have actually bought up, is, we go into a partnership, the ones we've gone in the past, we took our minority stake, that we have a management agreement, and part of that management agreement is to uphold the rights of the public housing resident, their rights and responsibilities. And I don't think, my sense is, we haven't reviewed that for a bit. So, that's an important role of this group, and for the city, to make sure, as an asset manager, when we stop being the majority owner or something, and we're running on a property. Now, I will say, I think both those properties, on a physical sense, are in pretty good shape. So, that's one of the pieces of action that we will move forward on. The other part is essentially the real estate itself. So, if you go and say you wanna redevelop, or put capital into these properties, one is, you can't just turn a key. We don't have the capital. And it's gonna take anywhere from one to 10 years to do anything, so we have to start. And part of that starting is, is to look at it on the property level, is basically, and I've reached out to several Aldermen here, is, we're gonna be forming committees on the property level. An example would be, you know, Eastport Terrace and Harbor House. Essentially, they're two different legal structures, but from a property standpoint, is reaching out within the Tenant Association and the local civic associations, the Aldermen whose district it is, and forming a committee to really sit down and say, what do you wanna do with the underlying real estate? What are we, how are we going to advance the rights of the public housing resident, and how are we gonna make this better? The only structures that exist is some type of partnership to get capital. So, you're gonna have to have that community discussion, and it's, that's a perfect example of really a real estate issue, a density issue, a road issue, it's a city issue. And we're acting as your agent. We're not gonna tell you what to do, and you kinda have to be involved in this, and the residents have a lot of rights in this. That has to play out. The same time that that's going on, and that'll be in every property, that'll be Robinwood, that'll be Newtown 20, Blum, Bloomsbury Square, and I'm sure I'm gonna forget somebody. Did I forget anybody? No, I got a problem with it. So, the key thing on that is...
Eastport, Harbor House.
Eastport and Harbor House, I look at basically putting them together. So, those five committees, if you think about it, are gonna have to be people who have different skill sets, different interests. From the Real Estate Committee is, that's what we need to see happen. We need to get that going. At the same time, that will happen on Tuesday, the Hack-a-Board will have to basically give notice that we intend to go out and essentially hire an agent for the Housing Authority, to operate as our fiscal agent, you know, in cooperation with, you know, our responsibility, but we gotta do it with you, and get it moving. Because the reality, if we don't get it moving, some of these units, and the city inspections will show it, the HUD inspections show it, are pretty much irreversible. So, we do not wanna be the Housing Authority to be the worst housing provider in the city on a unit level. It's wrong. So, this is the way to start moving beyond that. And I actually think that we have unique real estate. I think there's, all the issues we have around the city, around density and growth, will play into it, but a lot of our real estate is very ideally located. This will also lead, in those community discussions, to deal with the issues outside of the real estate on the property, some of the crime activity, the lack of services, and so forth, because when you go and talk about redeveloping the property, you're not really just talking about property. Because if it was that easy, you know, it'd be that easy, but it's not gonna be. So, that's where we are right now, and I'm actually very, you know, having spent a fair amount of time moving around Annapolis, people are interested. So, I would challenge each of you in your districts, and even if it's not your district, I can guarantee you, if you're the district next to a property that's in distress, you have voters that will care. And we're looking for residents, in the broadest sense of the term, and also in the strictest sense of the term, on the property level, to engage in this. And I think that's the key message that will come out on Tuesday, and again, I look forward to working with my fellow Commissioners. You know, I think, you know, we, there's a lot of upside here. I mean, I actually think we can come out of this on the other end with something that the city can be very proud of. Chip?
Yeah, thanks, John. I wanna make two or three statements, ask my colleagues if they have anything to say, and then we'll open it up if you have any questions for us. It's well-known through the local paper and others, of some of the issues that this current Board is faced with. Not the least is the fact that the IG came in and looked at the purchasing practices and things of the past. The magic number of $3 million appears in the paper every time the name HACA is mentioned, which is understandable, I guess. We are going, we're working closely with HUD, and we're going to try to mitigate, as much as we can, those charges, we believe we can, so that, in the end, that's getting a priority, but it's gonna take outside sources enabled to do that. Bottom line is, we don't know what we don't know. So, we're at this, we're doing a full assessment of our organization right now. We have to fill some immediate holes. We're doing it with qualified people on the short term, until a new CEO can come in. We're going to fix it. I believe that strongly. I believe that our residents deserve it. I believe that there's a lot of things that can be made better. It's gonna take our residents to cooperate as well. To you, I guess our plea is that five of us are here this evening. Chris Flynn, unfortunately, could not be with us, but we do have one vacancy. Lysa Mae Robinson, who was so wonderful for so many years on our Board, for reasons of her own, decided that she needed to step away a little early, so that we do, right now, have one vacancy on our Board, and we would very much look forward to having that filled. And I know the Mayor, and you all will give us every bit of cooperation to do that. Does any of my fellow Board members have any comments, anybody want to make? Okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, we'll open it up to comments or questions.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm extremely encouraged. I've been coming to the Board meetings recently. I'm a conversion, and I'm impressed with the progress you're making. The one plea I would make, and I made this at your last Board meeting, is I think with the, these weekly, or bi-weekly meetings, maybe it becomes monthly meetings, we've been having with the Mayor and his staff, we do need to continue to do that. I think we were actually sitting there talking to each other instead of at each other, and I think that's a way we can make some progress.
We absolutely commit to continuing and to be as active a participant as we can.
Good, thank you.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
I would like to be part of the committee. My question, my initial question was going to be for Mr. Dordon about the redevelopment of Newtown 20. Is the plan for the committee to move towards a public-private partnership, or make a decision about how that development will be redeveloped, or renovated, or, you know?
John, you wanna take that? I think it would be important, as part of it, is to sort of give a little bit of history.
Newtown, I reached out to the other day, I mean, Newtown is, you know, needs to be addressed. It's unfair. It fell apart, the deal, whatever, a year and a half ago. So, the answer is, on the committee part, basically, it's gonna be a working group of people, and that'd be great, if you'd be part of that. And there is nobody else in the room. I always think it's interesting in doing this, is that people think there's this other room of people. So, we need to get the room of people up front. Here's what we're doing on Newtown 20. I would like, in the perfect world, I would think you'd get all the properties out on the market, to say, 'cause you don't know, right now, on capital, what's attractive to somebody. So, can we get credits? Can we do a RAD? Can we do something? So, it's gonna be a public-private partnership, is there some other new money? But you still have to know, on the property level, what's a good deal? I mean, what do we want? And then we still need the financial advisor person to say, that's not even a good deal. You know, the city's getting ripped off. So, the answer is, it's gonna be a working group, and most of the real estate is very specific, Newtown even more so. And Newtown has a natural buyer, the adjoining properties, but they may not be the best buyer, and that's what we have to figure out. So, the answer is, and that's literally across the portfolio, and a lot of this stalled for lots of reasons. A lot of it, I think, is, was, it wasn't, we haven't been open enough, and we're gonna have to be really open.
So, do you really think it's gonna take 10 years?
No. But the reason I say that, I've been involved in, if you look at what happened here in Annapolis, between Aubrey and Annapolis Gardens, Annapolis Gardens perked quick.
Yeah, it did.
And Aubrey didn't. One was 10 years, one was very short. And I've been involved in other deals, even here in Annapolis, where they go fast, or they go slow. Part of it is availability of capital. Can we get a business partner or capital to make it work? I think Newtown, because of some of the adjoining properties, there's a potential there, they're a for-profit corporation, both, well, one's a for-profit, one's a nonprofit, maybe there is a way to structure it. But we can't just go and say, let's do them. It's an open process, and we may not, you know, so the answer is, that's a high, I mean, we're on the Board, Chip is saying, we've got, we've gotta do...
It's your number-one priority for us, clearly, I think, wouldn't have...
We have a lot of number-one priorities right now, with the town.
And realistic, the ideal world and the world we live in, as we well know, are two different things, and I think we'll be looking from a priority is to put Newtown into a brand-new place.
Yeah.
Meaning, I mean, vision and then move ahead. It's a significant property there. There's no reason we can't replace it there, but the bottom line, it pretty much needs to be replaced.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more.
I know, I'm preaching to choir, and I didn't mean it that way.
That's right. So, anything that I can do, please.
So, I think after Tuesday, 'cause we still have to go through our process, and then I think that will be, you know, I'll get back to, I mean, and part of it's looking at, within HACA, the ability to staff a committee, you know, from a relationship side, the residents and the committee, and then the ability to do a financial deal. We don't, a lot of this capacity doesn't exist right now.
Thank you.
Alderman Litman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With approval from the Committee Chair for Health and Human Housing, I'd like to share a couple notes from the housing meeting that we had on January 17th. We came into the meeting with a previous priority list that we asked for updates on. That list included a clean audit that is transparent, addressing the ban list, enforcing HACA leases, working on the waitlist, and a public meeting with HUD officials. At that meeting, Mr. Dordon, Ms. Chapman, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Dillon presented their then-current priority issues, which included finding an executive director, identifying and resolving the missing money, adding financial controls, security, still working on the banning list, Newtown construction, delivery of resident services, and affordable vouchers. I share this because I think it was, I think I speak for the whole committee, which includes Alderman Budge. It was our hope that if we have some increased dialogue between that committee and the Board more frequently and in that setting, it would allow us, rather than a shorter meeting here, but gives us more time to dive into the issues and have more of an open dialogue, and see if we couldn't provide some, not even help in that we were so wise, but just some better dialogue, to have better interaction and to work together. So, what I would suggest, and why I'm going into this detail, is with cooperation from Mr. Dordon, Ms. Chapman, you, Mr. Mayor, and our Housing Chair, that perhaps, rather than, and this is not meant to limit discussion before the full body, of course, but if we could use the committee to dive into these issues a little deeper, I think it would be valuable. Of course, it's open to the public and all members of the council, and then perhaps we wouldn't necessarily, at some point, maybe you would choose not to have this quarterly update at the full council meeting, but of course, that doesn't, it could be independent. It could be, we could be doing both.
I just wanted to thank you, 'cause I thought the Alderman Kirby's committee was very helpful, 'cause the dialogue, actually, what are things that, you know, we had really occurred to us at that time. I will say that we have met with the auditors. We meet with them Thursday to get the final audit for June 30th, 16. I mean, I'm sure it'll be lovely, but we'll get it out to the public, and we'll move from there.
Thank you.
But at least, it'll be a deep audit, we can give you that.
I think, I'll speak for myself, at least. I appreciate, I think all of you are volunteers at this point. I don't know if you're, whatever this conversation is.
I'm still a volunteer.
Still a volunteer, so it's obviously a big time commitment. It's a big responsibility, whether you're getting paid or not, it's a huge responsibility, and we all were impressed with the seriousness that you were taking of the issues before you. None of us, I think, were happy that we're in the situation we're in collectively, but we're pleased that the group that's on the Board and all of you before us are taking it seriously and working on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Litman. Mr. Dordon, you, not Mr. Dordon, I'm sorry. Mr. Dillon, I'm sorry. I thank you for the heads-up about this committee next week, and I guess as we speak, I'm looking forward to meeting with the Robinwood Tenant Council, Eastport Terrace Tenant Council, and Harbor House Tenant Council. I think it may be tomorrow afternoon, but if it's not tomorrow afternoon, it's definitely Wednesday. And the information tonight's gonna help me, provided tonight, it's gonna help me tell them exactly what I need them for, because at their inception, they just weren't used to me asking them to come together as a council, and they needed to know what I needed to tell them. And I told them, I wasn't real sure, but I think some action's going, coming down with the properties. So, the Board will be in front of the council tonight, and I'll get some clarity, and so what you guys have said's gonna help me tremendously. And so what you guys have said is going to help me tremendously in speaking with them and then go back to their respective communities and see who wants to get on board, so.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to that, to that point, and just from, I guess, a request, I know all of you because of your offices, the phone never stops ringing with constituents having issues. Often they may be in one of the residences that we're responsible for. I want to make sure we have a good understanding of and a direct communication of a point person and a way to make sure that if you're getting an issue, we hear about it as soon as possible so that we can try and, number one, figure out what it is, if it's valid, fix it. If not, see where we go from it so that, so that you're not hanging as the alderman or the mayor and we're not being accused of things because we haven't gotten it right. So we'll be coming forward with sort of a, here's how we'd like to communicate and I think try and expedite issues that might come up in any of our communities. Because our desire is to be as responsive as possible. But with 700 units and X times that in folks, and our staff is limited, we are looking at trying to figure out a community relations person to directly interface with all of the issues. And we're just, at this point, just making sure that our budget will permit us to do what we're doing. So we're going to try and act very quickly in that regard as well.
And may I add that, Mr. Kirby, I'm glad that you're meeting with the resident councils, especially Eastport Resident Council, who is very fearful that we are going to get rid of Harbor House and Eastport Terrace. I'm not sure how that started, but that's something that have not come to the table. So you can let them know that. Also, I tried to explain that if and when we do come to the table with redevelopment, the residents must be a part of it from the very beginning. Now, I will say from experience in going partly through this process with Morris Blum, when that was on the table, that we need to do better of having the residents involved and I'm committed to doing that. When we really start looking at this, we're going to invite the residents to become a part of it then, not just one person, which is what has happened in the past. It was usually one person that the resident council nominated to be involved from the beginning to the end. And a lot of times, we as residents didn't understand what was going on. That's not going to happen if we decide to go into redevelopment again. They will have to work one-on-one with that resident council. We will keep the community itself involved, not just depend on the one person taking back advice. So we would appreciate it if, when you meet with them, you let them know that they will be represented if and when we decide to do redevelopment.
And Ms. Chapman, I really, really, really truly appreciate that because I think that's why, what the concern was and just talking to them last night, and I mean, well over the weekend, once since I've got the email, I've talked to at least one or two of them myself and somebody else spoke with the other one. But as we did in the quarterly before the, before the committee, those fears come because they see new faces, they know there's some needs for some massive repairs, they've watched Penrose and they've watched Land X. So, but for them to be involved in the process, I think you're going to have a more successful community anyway, once you can let them buy in. And the only way they're going to buy in, if they're at the ground, grassroots level and they're attending and they're hearing progress, what's going on and they're just, nobody's going to shove anything down their throats. And in turn, you'll find that they'll take that to their communities and you have a much easier go of it.
That's the only way this is going to happen, so. I think that's what we're committed to. And I think just to reiterate on the public housing piece, there's no discussion at all of getting rid of public housing. And actually, at Eastport and Harbor House, you know, I look at that as, can we add housing? Can you add mixed use? What can you do there to actually make it a better place? So I think when you talk to folks there, it's really going to be more, what can we do with the land to make it a better place to live? Because the buildings, as you well know, I mean, the buildings are shot.
Okay, then, I thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Orderwoman Pendo Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dorden, when you get an opportunity, since you're the new executive director, can you email us your new email address, please?
Absolutely. I finally today actually got an email address related that's direct and I will, we'll make that known to everybody. And again, we're an open book. We don't have all the answers, but we'll be honest with you and we're going to fix it.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Chapman, please be sure that what he suggested about the residents' participation, I totally agree with Alderman Kirby when I was over at the Blum Center the other day.
Thank you.
You know, when I talked to folks and said, I think, I think there's some improvements coming, and they kind of looked around like, huh? What? I mean, the communication really needs to be opened up and there's been some communication, but it seems to only, it doesn't get to everybody and we need to do a better job of that. Looks like we're going to do it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Well, let me close by saying, thank you. I know it's not an easy job. You all make difficult decisions every day and that's impacting thousands of people's lives. And I want to say what the other people said about including people is so important. I think we built trust with the community when we did inspections because there was that fear. Is the city going to come in and kick everyone out? And not a single person was kicked out. In fact, I actually appreciate that we came in in fixture units. So I think with redevelopment having a seat at the table is huge. I appreciate you working with us on the banning list. I think that's going extremely well. And also, Ms. Chapman, thank you for notifying me about the resident councils when the leadership gets together. I look forward to meeting with them and talking with them as well. So thank you for the presentation. We look forward to seeing you all again soon.
Thank you very much for having us.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is reports by committees.
Is there any order personnel would like to present a report? Alderman Litman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report is brief. It's just that the Environmental Matters Committee will meet at an unusual date and time. That is February 24th. It's a Friday at 10:00 a.m. And the main topic will be the no net loss legislation that we'll have a public hearing on tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and the public, the Transportation Committee will meet twice this month. First, we will have our regular meeting on the 21st to take care of regular business. And then, and that will be at 6:30. Then we will meet the following night again at 6:30 here in the council chambers in a joint meeting with the Transportation Board to receive the draft of the parking study that has been prepared by our, the city's parking contractor. And all members of the public are welcome to come and attend that meeting and hear what our contractor recommends.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Ma, Economic Matters Committee will meet on February the 28th, Tuesday, at 6:30 p.m. here in council chambers. At that time, we will review matters that are relevant to our purpose, including legislation, but not limited to legislation. The public is invited and we have not met since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report in terms of committee, committee actions at this time.
Orderwoman Finlayson.
Yes, the next meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be on Tuesday, February 28th, 5 o'clock here in council chambers. And at that time, we expect to hear a report from our ad hoc committee chaired by Alderman Peon. Thank you. Public's invited.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing and Welfare Committee will meet at 7 o'clock on the 21st of this month whereby we will be taking up proposals for the next fiscal year, community development, block grants. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can speak on anything that is not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came to speak about the Forest Conservation Act or the Water Service Agreement, those public hearings will be immediately following this one. We have a number of people signed up to speak today, and so I'm going to ask that everyone keep it to five minutes. At four minutes and 30 seconds, you'll hear the buzzer go off and if you could please summarize and state your name and the address when you come forward. The first three people signed up to speak are Vic Pascoe, Suzanne Martin, and Laura Day.
I got here early, so I get it on first. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Vic Pascoe. I live at 308 Chester Avenue in Eastport. I'm the president of the Eastport Civic Association and I have three things to talk about briefly. First, the Eastport Civic Association sends our sincere condolences to Lisa Craig and her family on the sudden loss of Marcus, her husband. We're all very saddened by her loss and we send our prayers and support. She's a great woman and her family's great. We would like to also say our sincere thank you to Chief Christu for his nine years of service to our community. The chief was well-liked, respected, made our city safer, and never failed to show up, whether it was meetings late at night, community picnics, or whatever was asked. We wished him the best of luck. The Eastport Civic Association has always enjoyed an excellent relationship with the police and we intend to continue that. We look forward to working with Major Baker and his staff to solve problems going forward. No one is happy with gunfire and murders and we all deserve to live in a safe and peaceful neighborhood. We're planning to redouble our efforts to ask our membership to call and cooperate with the police when they see something that doesn't belong in the neighborhood and we're going to try and fight for our neighborhood. Concerns about growth in Eastport, I'd like to review some of the issues that I've been seeing. We recently had meetings with the mayor and thought it made sense to bring these to the council's attention. My focus will be on traffic and zoning although there are other issues. Proposed developments pending or planned in Eastport include 127 apartments at the Eastport Shopping Center, potential expansion of the Watergate Village, major expansion of the Annapolis Yacht Club properties in Eastport, major revision of the Sarls Patrini property, known as South Annapolis Yachting Center, new townhouses at Hopkins Warehouse, and Briscum Square, which is at the corner of Bay Ridge Avenue and Hilltop, among others. Traffic, it is essential that adequate baseline traffic study of the entire Eastport Peninsula be conducted before new projects get approved. The study that we're working off now was the one recently completed. It didn't even take into consideration that the bridge goes up on the hour for eight months of the year. Nor does the baseline traffic study include any developments in the pipeline for Eastport, never mind important artery roads like Forest Drive, which many of us drive to get to Route 50 each day. It also does nothing to address the very real threat of an emergency or an evacuation. It does not take into consideration the drastic changes that will occur when two entrances to the shopping center are removed. An already crowded and congested Chesapeake Avenue will get worse. As for zoning, we have a comprehensive plan for a reason. It's a planning document drafted with the input of citizens and city planning staff which tells us where and how the city can grow in a sustainable way. We need to follow it and not just occasionally. By straining the zoning code in Eastport to allow developments that are clearly not intended, we end up with bad development. The Eastport Shopping Center is shaping up to be a good example of this. It's currently Zone B2, which is commercial, and the city is currently reviewing 127-unit residential apartment complex for that location under a very strained reading of the code. For our Planning and Zoning Department to even consider 127 residential units rather than enforcing the commercial zoning for this location is bad for the quality of life of Eastport. A small commercial business such as a grocery store or other small business is much better suited for this location and no doubt why the property is zoned the way it is. Our Planning and Zoning Department needs to consider all development coming down the pipeline. Rumors abound that since Watergate Village was sold to developers in New York, that hundreds of new apartments will be added to that site. That means that Eastport will likely get more residential units in Watergate Village right after approving 127 residential units in the currently zoned, B2 zone shopping center. We won't be able to undo the 127 residential units and add a retail or a grocery store after we build out the residential units. All of the building being planned for Eastport is even more of a concern since it has not been designated as a growth opportunity area in our comprehensive plan and therefore has not had a sector study done. I raise these concerns because the same concerns are coming from a lot of my neighbors. As of today, the city has not posted the many letters that I have received from concerned citizens on its website. Of greater concern is the fact that some people don't even know what's happening. Not everyone goes to Ross's Ward Eight meetings or watches the city council on TV. They don't even know what's happening. Whether you're for or against development, we ask that our city officials should do their part to maintain the zoning standards in our neighborhood. Once this, once this massive structure is built, there will be no turning back and Eastport will be forever changed, for better or worse. Remember, we're a neighborhood and not an urban center. I urge you to do what it takes to enforce the current zoning code and to follow the comprehensive plan so that the quality of life remains high in Eastport. Thank you.
Mr. Pascoe. First, I want to thank you for coming out this evening. As you know, we've met many times in the past and we're actually meeting again tomorrow. So thank you for coming out and highlighting what's going on. Just so the public knows, from the Eastport Shopping Center, nothing's been approved on that development. My administration is going to hold them to a very high parking standard for that. Part of the reason they can do it is planned unit developments, which has been a flawed system the city's used in the past. It's how we got Crystal Spring and other proposed developments. It allows you to go outside of the law and the zones. But I look forward to working with you. I have a lot of concerns over the exact same things you mentioned and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Suzanne Martin and Laura Day. And before you speak, I see people sitting on the ground. You can come up to these chairs in the front if you want. I always feel bad when people have to sit on the floor. And thank everyone for coming out, standing room only. I know it's not easy.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Martin. I'm at 118 Maple Drive in Annapolis and I'm with Annapolis Residents for Civil Liberties. We would like to thank all of those who co-sponsored the nondiscrimination ordinance, Alderman Jared Litman, Alderman Ian Pfeiffer, Alderman Sheila Finlayson, Alderman Kenneth Kirby, and Alderman Ross Arnett, and Alderman Joe Budge. We also would like to thank Mark, who spent many tireless hours for months getting this done. Mark obviously started this journey way before the tides changed in our political world and I just commend all of you and especially Mark for not giving up. I believe it is courageous what you're doing and it's the right thing to do, especially in these troubling times. Mark, you are invaluable to Annapolis. And Mayor Panalitis, please do not postpone this vote. I understand you are not in favor of it, but please allow us to move forward with this tonight. Thank you so much.
We're going to get to the nondiscrimination legislation, but to answer her question, I'm not opposed to this legislation. And I've emailed all the council members and said, if my amendment passes, I'll vote for it. Floor is yours. Floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Laura Day. Although I am not an Annapolis city resident, I am an Anoronal County resident residing in Hanover, Maryland. My family and I spend a considerable amount of time in Annapolis. We volunteer and attend events in Annapolis regularly. We bring our visitors to Annapolis to show off our capital and entertain them. I'd like to speak in favor of the Nondiscrimination of Foreign-Born Residents Ordinance. I'm a first-generation daughter of an immigrant, married to an immigrant, who is now a naturalized citizen. As white immigrants from Canada, we have an advantage in blending in with our natural-born citizens. However, even though we may pass, we are aware of our immigrant status. Anti-immigrant rhetoric resonates with all immigrants. According to the most recent census results, almost 15% of Annapolis residents are foreign-born. I strongly support an Annapolis whose ordinances reflect American values and prioritize the safety of its communities and of all of its residents. I'm also very concerned about how anti-foreign sentiment surfacing in our country can too easily turn into targeted hostility and abuse of our natural-born citizens of Latino, East Asian, African, and even First Nation descent. My husband is foreign-born, naturalized citizen, as is my father, and yet it was my born-in-the-U.S.A. young Latino neighbor who was accosted and called a dirty foreigner, and for whom neighbors had to step in and intercede. Please support the Nondiscrimination of Foreign-Born Residents Ordinance. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Could you please state your address for the record?
The next three people signed up to speak: Midge Lucas, Michelle Allen, and the Reverend Ryan Sermons. And if you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm going to help translate.
My name is Midge Lucas. I'm a pastor of the Iglesia Presbyterian in Annapolis.
My name is Midge Lucas, and I am a pastor with the comunidad presbiteriana de Trinidad in Annapolis.
I want to thank the councilmembers who are encouraging the law, and Mark too. I appreciate that they are making a law that will benefit the Hispanic community and the migrant community in this city.
Okay. He wants to thank very much everybody who's brought this bill forward and has supported this bill, and especially Mark for his help with the bill. It's very important for the Hispanic community.
I'm Guatemalan, and I'm married to a white woman, and he has two children.
He's Guatemalan, married to a white woman, and he has two children.
They're Guatemalans, too. They were born in Guatemala. I feel, for myself, the stress that families have under the pressure of migration.
He's living very much the situation that many people here in this community are living with his own children.
My children are asking what's going to happen tomorrow.
His children ask what's going to happen tomorrow with him.
And that's the situation that many families have now.
There's many families like that that live here as well.
We're a community that comes to support.
There's a lot of people who live here that need help.
And mostly, we are really good people. We are here not for competition, not for take, and not for jobs. We are here because we have a lot of problems in our countries, and many times we are on the field. We have a lot of violence in our countries, and many, many histories around this. And you can see many Hispanic people in every place here: the restaurants, in landscaping, in the construction, in every place. This community is a lovely place for live, a lovely place for work, and thank you for approving the law.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Michelle Allen. I live at 246 Wenderver Road in Pasadena, Maryland. And I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice in Annapolis and Anoronal County. I'm writing a statement on behalf of our 150-plus members. We want to thank the council members who are co-sponsoring and voting yes today on O-117. We wholeheartedly support your efforts. Showing Up for Racial Justice is a group that challenges white people to look at political and societal issues through the lens of race. In the instance of this ordinance, the council is making it clear that if I, because of my appearance and ability to speak English, would never be asked my immigration status when interacting with law enforcement, then neither should somebody with a different skin color or inability to speak English be asked their immigration status. When you pass this ordinance, Mayor and City Councilpersons, Annapolis will further ensure the equal treatment of its citizens by the Annapolis Police Department. Voting yes benefits us all. Thank you.
Grace and peace be with you, Mr. Mayor, and with the City Council. My name is Ryan Sermons. I live at 38 Pleasant Street in Annapolis in Ward Two, and I also pastor the United Church of Christ of Annapolis. It is a privilege to sit on the floor today. And I say that because it's a privilege to see so many people from this city who care about their sisters and brothers. We gather here, and we are looking for a vote. We are looking for a vote that allows us to build trust amongst our sisters and brothers, and allows us to show that we are a place, a city, that can be a home, that can be a welcome, that can be a place that is not afraid when fear strikes in so many places. Where ICE raids are striking our neighbors across the country, we want to know that this can be a place where our public safety officials can be called up, and our residents, those who are our neighbors, those who are our friends, those who are our family, have no fear of deportation. I thank those who are supporting this bill, the six of you who have already said, yes, this is something that we believe in, who have heard the voice of all of these people here. I thank those who have given it good measure and thought, as well as my own Alderman Fred Peon has as well in conversation. I give you thanks for being here and listening to this. There's a story at the end of Mark where Jesus is asked the rhetorical question, "Who are my brothers and my sisters and my mother?" And he answers that question of himself. It is anyone who does the will of God. Those are my sisters and my brothers and my mother. And what is the will of God? Well, I think the prophet Micah put it very well: to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with our God. This is an act of justice. This is an act of kindness. And I give you thanks for considering it, and thanks for all of those people and all of you for coming out today in support of this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, there's some Boy Scouts in the audience. I think we need to recognize these Boy Scouts. They are getting late scoutmaster mail to take them home.
The next three people signed up to speak are Mary Don, the Reverend Stephen Tolett, and Patrick Fleary. And in the future, if everyone could please write "need," I say this at every meeting, and nobody ever does it. Please, I'm going to skip over people in the future.
It's not the penmanship, it's the name. It's Italian.
Believe me, Panalitis, I know. It's the penmanship on a lot of them, maybe not yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Mary Doni. I'm a second-generation Italian-American, and I attended Annapolis Friends Meeting, the Quakers. I live in Edgewater, 3905 Rhode Harbor Road, Edgewater. But I shop in Annapolis, and I worship in Annapolis, and I have friends in Annapolis. And Annapolis is just as much my home as Edgewater. I think, thank each of you for your very careful consideration of the Nondiscrimination of Foreign-Born Residents Ordinance. As a white-skinned, non-accented woman, I am not afraid to speak at this podium. However, as a second-generation Italian-American, I carry the generational memory of not feeling entitled to speak and not feeling safe in doing so. As a Quaker, and in keeping with the Quaker testimony to the equality of all persons, I speak in support of this ordinance in hopes that it will extend to darker-skinned, accented residents the same sense of safety and confidence that I am privileged to experience as I go about my business in Annapolis. Thank you all.
Good evening. All right, we're going to try that again. Is this thing on? Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Tolett. I am the pastor of Asbury Broadneck United Methodist Church. A number of my members are residents of the city of Annapolis, and also the president of the Anoroma County Branch, NAACP. Putting on my pastor hat for a moment, Scripture has a lot to say about how we are supposed to treat those who are foreign-born, who are not from the same country as we are. In Exodus 22 and 21, the Bible says, "Do not mistreat or oppress a foreigner; for you were foreigners in Egypt," reminding the Israelites that at one point in time, they too had been foreigners, in Leviticus 19 and 34. "The foreigner residing among you must be treated as your native-born. Love them as yourself, for you were foreigners in Egypt." I am the Lord, your God, that same God we prayed to at the beginning of this meeting in Deuteronomy 10:19. "And you are to love those who are foreigners, for you yourself were foreigners in Egypt." That concept of foreigners over and over again. And we hear all the time that the United States is a nation of immigrants. And what does it say there at the Statue of Liberty? Give me, "You're tired, you're poor, you're huddled masses yearning to breathe free. The wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless tempest tossed to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." That is an invitation to anyone who is experiencing strife or difficulty in their land of native birth to come to these shores. When does that profession of that value expire? Everyone in this room came here either as an immigrant or as stolen cargo. You'll get that later. Every immigrant came to become a part of the American experiment, seeking a better life, and not to diminish the country they went to great lengths to come to. Why would this generous invitation now cease to apply for our brothers and sisters from south of the border? Maryland has always prided itself for being a progressive state. Annapolis is, of course, the state capital of this progressive state, and I expect more from my state than for us to become captive to the factually-challenged paranoia that has besieged my hometown that has besieged my hometown just down the road. I support this bill to ensure that all of our city's residents are assured equal protection of the law and under the law, and further that our city employees will not be deputized to engage in discriminatory and punitive behavior against our law-abiding fellow citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Fleardy, and I live at 105 Victor Parkway in Ward Seven. I appear before you tonight to offer my sincere thanks to this council, and especially to Alderman Littman, Alderman Pfeiffer, Alderwoman Finlayson, Alderman Kirby, Alderman Arnett, and Alderman Budge, for author, authoring and co-sponsoring the Nondiscrimination of Foreign-Born Residents Ordinance O-117. With all of the fear and hate emanating from our federal government in Washington, D.C., you are stepping forward courageously to provide an oasis of acceptance, tolerance, respect, and love for all of our citizens here in Annapolis. As I noticed, noted in my previous testimony in support of this legislation, we should not accept the idea of first-grade Hispanic students' children in our schools crying as they enter the classroom because they are fearful for their safety, security, and families. We are looking forward to the passage of this ordinance as amended tonight and to the statement it makes to all of our citizens. We can all be very proud of our city tonight, thanks to you.
The next three people signed up to speak this evening are Michelle Allen, Rachel Warren, and Dr. Kane. Okay, a number of people signed up twice. John Kessler, Barton O'Brien, and Maya Laminda, or Lamida.
Hi, my name is Rachel Warren. I'm with Showing Up for Racial Justice, and I live at 6 Porter Drive. We live in a time of great uncertainty in our own country. Many of our city residents and their children live in constant fear of law enforcement and the repercussions of reporting a crime, or worse yet, being a victim of that crime, particularly due to their legal status. We also seem to be living in a time, although it's hardly new, where laws and ordinances can be vague and subject to personal judgment, leaving many to suffer from careless and reckless enforcement of those laws. 0-1-17, in its original form, makes clear boundaries and enforcements for our police force to be able to do their job efficiently, clearly, and with accountability. When officers of the law are able to accost, accuse, and police with impunity, an entire city has failed. The city of Annapolis is setting an example today of how it would like all of its residents to be treated: fairly, with respect and dignity, so much so that you're making it law. City Council, when you vote in favor of 0, of O-1-17, you make our neighborhoods truly safer for everyone, both with legal status and without. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Barton O'Brien, and I live at 22 Cornhill Street. And I will keep my comments very brief. I think short and sweet is what the situation calls for. I just simply want to express my thanks to the cosponsors of the bill and the supporters on the city council, and thank Mark Rodriguez for all of his hard work on this, and just urge you to pass O-117 with the amendments introduced by Alderman Littman and recommended by the Rules Committee. And lastly, I'd just like to say that I moved to Annapolis seven months ago, and I just want to tell you all how much it means to want to tell you all how much it means to me to know that I live amongst so many caring, and articulate, and compassionate people. I'm proud to call you my friends and neighbors, and to call Annapolis my home. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Ledesma. I'm from Mexico, y disculpen que siga hablando en español.
And forgive me for doing the rest in Spanish.
My husband and I skipped English class tonight to come and say thank you to you.
We wanted to thank you for believing in the immigrant community.
And for believing that we can enrich and grow this wonderful nation.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping my family together.
And God bless you, and God bless Annapolis, and God bless America. Thank you.
The next three people signed up to speak are Liz Alex, Mark Rodriguez, and Brooks Shan- I'm gonna butcher this one.
Shandelmeyer.
Shandelmeyer, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Annapolis City Council and Mayor Penelitis. My name is Liz Alex, and I'm here tonight representing CASA. CASA is a statewide, actually a regional organization, and we represent approximately 1,100 members of our organization who live here in the city of Annapolis. So I'm here today representing them, although some of them are representing themselves. And we just wanted to say thank you to this council. Approximately a year ago, when we had this forum around what can we do as a city to help the Latino and immigrant community, there were two recommendations that I made. The first was to work on a language access plan and to hire Hispanic outreach person, and Mayor Penelitis, you did that, and that is, that is a big step forward. But the second recommendation I had made was this. And so tonight, we're seeing, hopefully, we'll have a solid vote, but this was a recommendation that's really been brewing for a long time, under, under multiple presidents and governors. This city, this is the right time for this city and for these people, and so thank you to all the folks who've worked so hard on this legislation, and we hope for a positive vote this evening. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mark Rodriguez. I just want to say thank you to all of the cosponsors. I've learned a lot from all of you, and your commitment to our community is just astounding and overwhelming, and I'm very grateful to have great representatives as yourselves. I'm especially grateful and thank you to everyone here tonight, the community, because together, the community strengthens not just the ordinance, but the meaning behind it and the actions that will come from it. So I just want to thank everyone again. When every family does better, our community will thrive. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live on Ironstone Court in Annapolis. I'm gonna keep my statements brief, for the reasons stated before me, and for the contributions of the immigrant community to Annapolis. I urge all of you to pass the nondiscrimination ordinance, and thank you to the cosponsors.
Next three people signed up to speak, Lisa Rodvia, Carrie Pacelli, and Lee Finney.
I'm not that first person, but I'm the second person. I don't know where the first person is. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Dr. Carrie Alperitz-Bachell. I live on Severn Grove Road in, just over the Annapolis City Line, and I work for Anorundal Medical Center's community clinics, and I need to say that I'm speaking solely for myself and not for Anorundal Medical Center. My clinic is in the Morris Blum Senior Apartment Building. We've been hearing about Morris Blum tonight. It's where Glenwood Street meets Clay Street, and we see many uninsured patients, charging them on a sliding fee scale basis. About 40% of my patients are Latino, many are undocumented or have undocumented loved ones living with them, and they have jobs, and they have children, and they care for aging parents, and the fear they are experiencing in the current political climate is extreme. I have heard the stories of why my patients came to this country, stories of violence, stories of murder, harrowing stories. Many left their homes and families behind and made the dangerous trip across the border because they feared for their lives, and I hear about that in the exam room. And now they fear again that they will be sent back to the same danger. And I also hear my patients fear that their children, who are American citizens, will suddenly be left alone here, without parents who love and care for them. And I know a number of teenagers who were brought here when they were very young, and they speak perfect American English and are good students at Annapolis High School, and they tell me of dreams of careers in military service, of becoming productive members of our community, but now too, they too are living in fear, that they will soon be sent to countries in Latin America that they have never known, and where violence abounds. So to me, as a physician and as a unitarian universalist, these are stories that are heartbreaking. In my view, all are God's children, with inherent worth and dignity. All deserve to live without fear, so for me, the moral imperative of this bill that you're about to pass, I hope, is very important. But more practically speaking, I'm also interested in my own safety, I want my neighborhood to be safe, and I want our Annapolis police to be able to fight crime effectively, and in order to do that, the police need to have people trust them. But when our Latino neighbors fear that they or people who are close to them are likely to have their immigration status scrutinized, they're reluctant to report crime, and that makes all of us less safe. So I want to thank the council for considering this important bill tonight. I really hope you'll vote for it in its strongest form, and thank you to the cosponsors and everybody else.
My name is Lisa Rodvian, and I live at 219 Farragut Road. I believe I live in Alderman Peones Ward. I'm so pleased that the city council is considering this ordinance. I think it's so important right now, when we think about all the events that happened, all the ICE raids that took place over the course of the weekend, to take the opportunity to be a loud voice, that we are not going to be part of, you know, an operation that is splitting families apart, that is taking people away from their families and their homes and their livelihoods, and throwing their lives into chaos and uprooting families. This also hit very much closer to home last night when I spoke to one of my neighbors outside one of the Spanish-language churches in Annapolis, and I was speaking to a volunteer parking attendant, and I just asked him, you know, how things were going in his community, and I think he tried to put on a strong face, but I don't think it was very far behind that face that showed that there's a lot of fear. And we have an opportunity to say that we are one community, we are together, we are not going to let our neighbors be alone, and that, like many of the folks here tonight have said, we are all the children of immigrants, and we would have done, I think most of us would have done the exact same thing, if our families were endangered by civil war or violence, that most of the people have fled to come here to the United States and to be in Annapolis. So we have two choices, we can be that welcoming, warm city, or we can be a city, or we can be part of some of this other stuff that's going on in our country that I don't want to be a part of, and I don't think many people here want to, and maybe I'll say, there's no one here that wants to be part of that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lee Finney. I live at 717 Warren Drive in Eastport in Ward 8. I'm here to echo all of the comments that have been made, and to be brief, and to thank my alderperson and all of the alder, six alderpersons who have sponsored this bill, and how important it is that you, now more than ever, it is important that you pass it tonight, and that you not be distracted or delayed by anything that might sound good, but not be as effective as what has been recommended out of the Rules Committee. So, thank you very much.
The last person signed up to speak is Melissa Merritt.
Hi, my name is Melissa Merritt. I live at 2 S Monroe Road in Annapolis, that is Ward 2. And thankfully for going last, all I really need to say is ditto to all of the great stuff that was said, but I support equal rights and protection to all individuals, so I support this legislation, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
If there is, if there is anyone else who would like to speak, now is your opportunity.
Good evening, council. Brian Kellyhan, owner of 49 West Coffee House. I've heard some great quotes from the most sold book in, in the world, history of the world, which I happen to have been a student of, that's where I went to a Bible college. I don't quote so often anymore, but a story in there that I don't hear told about this issue, I'd like to recount. Every branch of the Christian faith tells the story of the Good Samaritan. The Israelites were not to marry Samaritans, because they worship multiple gods. So they were kind of looked at as a little bit lower, lower than the Israelites. A man is, like any of us could find ourselves, had been mugged. His clothes were torn off of him, and he was beat up. He's laying on the side of the road, and a priest walks by him, going one direction. A Levite, which is a very high citizen in the Israel culture, is walking the other direction. They both walk right by this man in need, and who helps him? That lower-than-low citizen, the multiple-god-worshipping Samaritan. And to this day, we all tell the story of the Good Samaritan, who helped clothe him, heal him, took him to an inn, even offered to pay for his stay at the inn. Well, let me ask you, who plants our food? Who picks our food? Who prepares our food? Who watches our children? Who takes care of our yards? Paints our houses? I mean, if that's not a Good Samaritan that's doing all those things for us in this town, I don't know what is. Good Samaritan is, is our neighbor. Actually, that's how the question started to Jesus, is like, what is a neighbor? And that's when he told this story. And I, I just want to say that I'm really proud too, that all these people are here, that I have a lot of neighbors, and that we have a town that, that cares enough for people to come out on a Monday night, late, and listen to all of us, blah, 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 on the mic. So anyway, thank you very much, and you better pass this bill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian, you may have a new calling, Brian. As I've testified before, I think this is a very good ordinance. I encourage the council to pass it. We have a wonderful group of neighbors. We'd like them to stay here and enjoy the city like we do. Second thing, I'd like to acknowledge that over the last nine years, I've had an opportunity to work with Chief Mike Prestup. I think he's done an excellent job for the city. He's raised the caliber of our police force. They are very diverse from when Mike first came into the city, so I think we can acknowledge Mike on doing a good job for us in improving the Annapolis Police Force. That was, I think, an important accomplishment, and now that we're moving on to a new chief of police, we raise our hand to support that effort. We want to make the new chief of police, if it's Major Baker or whoever comes next, to be successful, because they are also an important part of our community. So we stand behind supporting the police department and the new chief. Thank you very much.
Doug, Doug, get back up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Smith, I just want to take the opportunity to recognize your service on the Downtown Annapolis Partnership, and I read that you recently are stepping down, and just want to thank you for your many years of service to that organization, as you have served the city in many other ways as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Rego. I live at 307 Monterey Avenue. Well, this has been quite a night. I'd like to thank the sponsors of this ordinance. I think this ordinance is necessary. I've lived just long enough to have a very good sense of, and to be well-calibrated on how necessary this ordinance is. This is the time for it. I have every confidence that you will pass it, I hope, tonight. I see the handwriting on the wall, and it's a very beautiful cursive script you are about to write. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alice Kane from Ferry Point Road. I just wanted to say thank you to Alderman Littman for bringing this up, to all of you who have signed on to cosponsor it, and to all of you who plan to vote for it tonight. And if there's anyone up there who is not planning to vote for it, it's not too late to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no motion, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
I'll make it short, let me show you the time. Recently, I was on the Maryland Crowd Podcast. It's one of the ways we try to interact with people. Being in government's exciting, the different mediums you have to communicate. Used to be people would just call or send a letter, now there's email, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, so we get constituent services from all of them, so I just want to thank John Fournay and Tim Hamilton for giving me that opportunity. We also had numerous meetings with the leadership of the Housing Authority, and I want to thank Ms. Chapman and other members of the board for taking the time. The work that they're doing on the Housing Authority is probably some of the most important work that takes place in the city of Annapolis. It's a thankless job, it's a tireless job, and they put their necks on the line every single day and put up with a lot of grief. Also want to say that Annapolis's Parking Utilization Analysis is going to go before the Transportation Board on February the 22nd. This is a comprehensive- This is a comprehensive approach we've done to parking in the city. As you know, you can pay by phone, you've seen the signs around town. We're taking a overall view of cities' transportation, so we welcome your feedback and comments on that. Also attended the Governor State of the State address, very bright future looking forward to the state of Maryland. Want to thank Governor Larry Hogan, had the chance to attend the Maryland Hall of Groundbreaking. I just want to give a special thanks to Lanell Bowen, who we're going to have back here to give a citation to. For those of you who know Ms. Bowen, or have had the pleasure with working with her, she does a tremendous job, and her leadership's going to be missed. Everything else, all the other updates I have, I'll bring during the time of legislation. So with that said, Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is appointments, beginning with AP-02-17, the appointment of Andrew Burnett to the Board of Appeals.
Is there a motion to adopt the appointment of Andrew Burnett to the Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Was there any discussion?
I've known Mr. Burnett for quite some time. He's a thoroughly qualified for this position, and he's an all-around good guy, who I think will do a great job.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is AP-04-17, the appointment of Michael Walsh to the Board of Appeals.
Is there a motion to approve AP-04-17, the appointment of Michael Walsh to the Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Want to thank those two individuals for stepping up to serve. It's one of the pleasures of the job, is appointing people to serve on boards and commissions. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Calendar.
Is there anyone who would wish to remove an item from the Consent Calendar? Alderman Pan?
I would ask that R-317 be removed.
Anyone else? Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar as amended.
So moved.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Felicer?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Piper?
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with GA-23-17, Leadership in Community Resilience Program.
Is there a motion to approve GA-23-17?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GA-24-17, Keeping History Above Water, Annapolis Preservation Services Fund.
Is there a motion to approve GA-24-17?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GA-25-17, Pump Out Boat Number Two.
Is there a motion to approve GA-25-17?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with ordinance O-38-16, the Forest Conservation Reforestation.
The first three, spine the, first three people sign up to speak, Alexis Vigas, Diane Butler, and Rick Kissel. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Kessel, 717 Warren Drive. As a member of the Annapolis Environmental Commission, I certainly have written and spoken to this no-net loss of trees in the past. Tonight, I'm speaking for myself, because I have not vetted this with any of the other committee members. I'm going to speak about the Maryland, the FDNR report on Annapolis' present and potential urban tree canopy. Now, that's a document that was put out on June 7th, 2006, and you all have, are going to have documentation tonight on that. I looked through that, the goal setting and the whole document, and there's one thing that I was particularly taken with, that I think is very important, and that is that the study determined, found that a 44.6% tree canopy was associated with stream health that gave a rating of good. Okay? After that, or as part of that, as a result of discussion of that, the city elected to set a goal of 50%, as opposed, which is, that they sought for. Now, this was in 2006. At that time, the goal was, or the canopy of the city was about 41%. So the city's at 41% tree canopy. The report cited 44.6% as being good quality associated streams. Ten years later, the city is now at about 46%. So we're slightly above good. We're not anywhere near 50. Now, you may or may not know, but I'll tell you, I'm, my background is in engineering, and I love data, and I love numbers, and I know what they say, because I've worked with them for a long time. So it looks like we've gone from 41% past 44.6%, we're at 40, or 44, yeah, 0.6%, we're now at 46%, you know? And that looks like we're halfway there, or about where we want to be. But, I want to tell you, this is not a linear curve, by any means. It's not a straight line. It is a curve that goes like that. And it's going to be a long, it took 10 years to get where we are now from where we were. If we proceed more or less, we hold our nose to the grindstone, maybe another 10 years, we might be at the 50%. But we have to really hold our ground. Because if everything went 50/50, we wouldn't move, we would not budge from 46. If we had an absolute no-net loss from where we are right now, we would never get to 50%. So we actually have to encourage where we can additional planting, but that's a whole other story. So I am saying, vote for the 50, the net loss, no-net loss. Vote for no-net loss. 10 years from now, maybe we'll be back here with our 50%. Thank you very much.[1145.15][1145.15](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Acting Mayor, before we begin, can I ask the audience to hold up those signs one more time? Hold up those signs, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Hi, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Alexis Vigas. I live at 8 Edgewood Green Court, and I am here tonight just as a simple expression of, to, in support of this ordinance, of this bill. Ultimately, the no-net laws is just smart business for the city. It's a smart decision. It should be one-for-one, and honestly, I think, as we move forward, it should, we should go above and beyond to do even more. Residents, if you look at the replenishment that residents have to do in order, once they cut down a tree, you'll see that they have to do more than developers do at this point. So ultimately, I think, we can move forward, but right now, this is a common sense policy that is something we're able to do, to protect the city, and protect tree canopy, and I hope you vote yes on this ordinance.[1235.15][1235.15](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, aldermen and women. My name is Diane Butler, and I live at 407 Third Street in Annapolis. I'd first like to mention, I'm, I'm in favor of the no-net loss ordinance, and thankful to the sponsors of the bill. I'd like to point out what Rick Kissel on the Annapolis Environmental Commission said, that we've increased our tree canopy from 41 to 46%, but what he didn't mention that is that that increase is due to the annexation of Crystal Spring, which is a huge swath of forest, and the reserve at Quiet Waters, both of which are scheduled to lose quite a bit of that forest in the near future. But I would like to thank Alderman Littman and Arnett and the mayor for their early commitment to this bill, the no-net loss of forest bill, to make no-net loss a reality in Annapolis. With their leadership, we have five votes needed, the five votes needed, and we may have even more in the upcoming weeks, to enact this important law, which will preserve our dwindling forest while allowing smart growth. We also appreciate Alderman Kirby and Piper's support and understanding that by providing for reforestation and adding incentives to preserve forests, the city is allowing development, but also making sure that it is smart growth, not sprawl, which will help us retain our quality of life. Also, the Annapolis Environmental Commission has met with the National Lutheran Communities and Services folks, aka the Old Crystal Spring group, and, well, actually, a different group, but with the National Lutherans specifically, and we are confident that they are willing to implement their previous commitment to forest the acreage, to reforest the acreage cleared, at a rate of one-for-one. That plan currently calls for clearing about 27 acres of forest on Forest Drive, and that one-for-one replacement is consistent with this bill. One final note, I'd also like to thank Alderman Budge and Alderman Felicer, who spent many hours in work sessions to pass our new Forest Conservation Act, which was passed back in September, and urge you to vote for this no-net loss bill.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Pan?
I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Certainly. There's two speakers left, Earl Bradley and Lisa Radveen.
Hello, I'm, my name is Earl Bradley. I live at 940 Bay Forest Court in Annapolis, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Andarondo Group, Sierra Club, as well as myself. When the county, when the city passes Forest Conservation Act, it was one item that they were prevented from addressing in that time, and that is to adopt a no-net loss provision, which this ordinance would allow to do so. Unfortunately, even with the protection that the city's new forest conservation provides, it still is going to lead to continuing forest loss, because any trees cleared above the forest conservation threshold is replaced only at one-quarter acre of forest for each acre removed. Thus, the city not, will lose the benefits of the, of trees and the forest over the coming years, and while we are protecting human rights tonight, we need to protect the long-term ecological values of the city. Trees not only are critical for the city to meet its obligations under the Chesapeake Bay Program for water quality, but they also provide air quality, energy conservation, removal of carbon dioxide from the air to address global warming concerns, wildlife habitat, and just a place for people to go and get away from the hurly-burly of night. Therefore, I urge you to pass this legislation and, and address the issue of continuing forest loss in the county. Also, one other item, right now, the new Forest Conservation Act has a lower forest conservation threshold than the old provisions in the act, and I would urge you to raise the present forest conservation items by 10%. So we start off, we're protecting mature forests first, before we get into the concerns about replacing them.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you can have me as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you.
Hello, again, my name is Lisa Radveen. I'll speak quickly, since you already heard from me once tonight, but I'm speaking in support of this, the no-net loss ordinance, and I just wanted to point out one tiny little detail. As a homeowner, home, homeowner in Annapolis, I have a dying locust tree in my front yard, and when I looked into, you know, if there was anything I would need to do to, you know, take down this dying locust tree, I found out that one of the things that homeowners are asked to do, actually required to do, is to plant trees in their replacement, and depending on where you live, you may have to plant as many as six trees for every one tree that you take down. So I don't know why we would be holding developers to any less of a standard than we expect homeowners to meet in our city.[1641.12][1641.12](APPLAUSE) Thank you, and I hope you support this legislation.[1645.51][1645.51](APPLAUSE)
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the subject?
Good evening. My name is Rob Savage. I live at 12 Wind Whisper Lane. I'm here, as you can guess, to urge you to support the no-net loss ordinance. And I just want to go through sort of four reasons why I think it's important to establish a no-net loss ordinance in the city. First of all, the benefits which Earl outlined very well. The second thing is equity, which was also mentioned by the previous speaker. The third thing is that the city has made two commitments to increase its urban tree canopy, one of which is in the city's comprehensive plan. It's actually in Chapter Seven of the comprehensive plan, under Policy Recommendations. Policy One is reduce the polluting effects of stormwater runoff into the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries. And underneath that is Policy 1.4, which is increase the city's urban tree canopy to 50% of its land area by 2036. I'd like to ask you to try to honor this agreement made with the public to increase our tree canopy. The second part of that, the second commitment, is a commitment that was mentioned also earlier, is the, by Rick Kissel, an agreement made with the Department of Natural Resources in 2006. And just to highlight that, they actually outlined three different scenarios there in that report. There's a low, a medium, and a high, and they went with the low, the low threshold there, which is where they, that's the 50% that you see repeated often. But they actually looked at the potential tree canopy we could achieve in the city, and the potential on the high scenario was actually 78%. And of course, that's under ideal circumstances, but when they picked the 50%, that was assuming we would only reforest 25% of the available area. So that leaves a big area for reforestation potential in the city, even at that 50%. So I just want to encourage you, I did send, emailed a copy of this report to you and highlighted some of the important sections of that. And they also mentioned in the report the need to refocus regulatory mechanisms, such as the Forest Conservation Act, which I think is one reason why... the Forest Conservation Act, which I think is one reason why this ordinance has been introduced. So the fourth reason why I'm asking you to support this ordinance is because I feel like it's really, it's, there's no way to meet this no net loss commitment without this ordinance, because we have a replacement ratio which is not one-to-one. They only have to replace a quarter tree for every acre removed. And two, there's what's called a reforestation credit, which basically allows the developments to, if they protect a certain amount of forest, they get a credit on their reforestation calculations. Now, the way that's worked out is you can, in the planning and zoning staff report, they even said about ninety percent of the projects that go through the city never have to do reforestation at all because of the reforestation credit. So that, to me, tells me there's something with the system that needs to get fixed, because right now, the system is operating at a net loss. Something needs to get done, and this ordinance would take a large step to fix that. But there are, I do have a couple of recommendations, though, because if this is passed, it is going to put a lot of emphasis on reforestation in the city. And again, we haven't had to deal with that because of this credit. So along with that, I have one strong recommendation, which is to restrict reforestation so it can only occur within the city, because otherwise, the developers could go and put the forest in the county. They could pay into a bank, a mitigation bank that's down in Calver County. They don't have to stay in the city. There is an emphasis where they should stay within the same watershed in the city, but that's not a requirement. Now, I think that's important, it's not the obvious of helping us meet our goals in the city. The second thing is, as you know, we have a nine million dollar requirement of projects to meet our stormwater pollution reduction targets. Now, something, the reforestation is actually counts as an urban BNP, so we get credit towards our pollution reduction target for reforestation. If we let that happen in the city, in the county, we're not going to get any credit for that. But if it happens in the city, we might be able to get some of that credit towards our pollution reduction target, which would help save us money. I think that's an important financial reason to pass a particular amendment on restricting reforestation. The second thing is, I do agree with the planning commission's findings. They have three recommendations, and I'm not going to go over all of them just for the sake of time, but one of them, they mentioned increasing the conservation threshold, I'm sorry, they worded as a reforestation threshold. And so there are two thresholds, which I don't have time to get into, but I'd be happy to answer your questions at some point. There's conservation threshold and afforestation. Both of those I recommend getting increased. The afforestation threshold applies to lots that are not forested. So if you have redevelopment on a lot that has no forest, the threshold would require that, for example, depending on the land use, they would have to reforest up to fifteen, twenty percent of a lot. That's sort of part of the puzzle, part of the solution to increase our tree canopy in the city, and I recommend you also look at increasing that. The last thing I'd recommend is looking at, so the ordinance deals with the reforestation provisions in the code. It doesn't touch the protection provisions, and I think this could be an opportunity to look at protecting, because, you know, we do want to increase the tree canopy, but we also need to make sure we protect what we have. And so part of that is, again, strengthening the protection provisions, which is what the priority forest provision you may have heard about in the past. So I would recommend looking at the Rockville language. They have a stricter provision for that. And also, I would recommend requiring, so when developers go to clear priority forest, they have to get approval to do that. I would recommend that the developers, that, basically, that they have to get a variance to do that clearing. That's basically it. I'll just end with saying that this report here, I want to again emphasize, this shows you that there is space to reforest in the city. We have that, the room to do so, and we have the free data to provide more support to do that in the city. But thank you.
Alderman Budge?
My question was going to, is about the document you just waved at us. What is it that shows us there's space to do reforestation in the city, and where does it go?
Well, they, they look at different areas. They look at residential, they look at commercial space, they look at parcel space, they look at also the public right of way.
Who's they?
They was, this was put together by Dean R. and the University of Vermont.
Thank you.
This is an agreement we made with the Chesapeake Bay Program, one of their orders that they, so anyway, you can look at some of the tables in here. On page eleven, you can actually see some of the existed. We have about, according to this report back then, about seventeen hundred acres of forest, and they actually show us having a potential of about doubling that with reforestation areas and...
Would you mind forwarding a copy of that to the council?
Yes, I sent it earlier today. I'll send it again.
Okay, well, if you've already sent it, that's fine. I've been distracted today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening again. I'm Curt Regal, three zero seven Monterey Avenue, West Annapolis. Listen to Rob Savage. He has a spec, a special technical knowledge of these matters that I think will work to our benefit. He has a mastery of detail that I think is just right. So I'll make some remarks that are a little more general. Thank you, Alderman Littman and, and Arnett for sponsoring this legislation. It, it takes the Forest Conservation Act another step forward, and we really need that step. In general, it's very good. I hope you pass it or something like it. In fact, I'd like to encourage you to go farther. If we don't aspire to an ideal, how will we ever get forward? Problem is that everybody has a different idea of what the ideal is. And I know you have lots of pros and cons to weigh as you make a decision on this particular Trees make people happy. They provide essential functions for clean water and air. The city, through the generations, has recognized in law that trees are deserving of protection. And so we're trying to do the right thing, but somehow, it hasn't worked out. Year by year, we are losing more and more forest cover, and the environmental performance of the city at large is declining for our losing the trees. Good public policy builds a system of good incentives and disincentives. Developers take forests down now because it's cheaper to take forests down than it is to go into already developed land and bring it up to a higher standard. I think good public policy, and something that we should all be striving for, is to make it more expensive to take down forests than it is to repair land which is already underdeveloped and could, could realize a better potential. And I have a couple of more specific recommendations, and it's one that you may have seen from other quarters. If it is possible, where there, any provision in either state or city conservation act or the, the local tree replacement ordinance, if you have, three different things would apply to the same property. Somehow, the most stringent application should be, should be what prevails. And if there's any way of making that happen, I think that would be a step forward. Replanting in a ratio of at least one-to-one is better than the existing situation. Great for that, but it comes nowhere close to replicating the function of the forest that preceded it for obvious reasons. First of all, there's mortality, and the ordinance does speak to mortality over a five-year period. But worse than that, the biomass in the replanted trees is a tiny fraction of the biomass that existed before, and so the ecological function is, is way depressed, and it will be seventy-five years before that replanted tract comes up to environmental standard. In that table of, the category of use table, also called the conservation threshold, I recommend that no number in that table be less than twenty-five percent. It goes down to ten right now. And then I'd like to recommend that you think of the following hierarchy of replantings. I don't know that you can do it in this ordinance, but it, I think it's the right thing to do if we can find a way of doing it. A hierarchy of replanting ought to be the following. Number one, on the site where you have removed trees. If you can't do it that, there, number two should be in the same sub watershed, the same creek. If you can't do it there, in the same river watershed, like the Severn River, for example. The environment does not recognize political boundaries. It does recognize watershed boundaries. And to the extent that the law can, can be crafted to recognize the watershed boundaries, I think everybody wins. And that's, that's all I have to say. It's a good start, strengthen it, pass it.
Mr. Regal? Mr. Regal? The, Mr. Regal, the recommendations that you make at the end, that's actually already in the underlying Forest Conservation Act about there being a hierarchy.
There is a hierarchy. It's slightly different.
On property, in the city, in the same watershed, and so on.
Yeah, I, my reading was it was slightly different, but I grabbed you the point.
All right. Is there anyone else? I accept into the record a memorandum to the Annapolis City Council from the Planning Commission dated January the eighth, two thousand and seventeen, and at this time, the public hearing on O-3817 is closed. We will take a five-minute break and reconvene. Concession, Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item we have on our agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-4-17 Water Service Agreement.
Is there anybody signed up to speak? Seeing no movement, I declare the public hearing on O-417 closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, as per the request, we're going to move to the second readers first. The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second reader, beginning with O-50-16 Title Seventeen Buildings and Construction.
Is there a motion to adopt O-5016 on second reader? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We have two amendments before us today, the Economic Matters Committee proposed amendment and the Budge Amendment, and I'll let the Economic Matters sponsor speak to it first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The amendment from Economic Matters is not complicated. It simply makes the legislation prospective to applications for building permits submitted after the date of the ordinance period. I don't think I need to really explain that. It's, language speaks for itself. Well, maybe I do to Alderman, Arnett, but to everybody else, I don't know.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt the Budge-proposed amendment?
So moved.
Second. Alderman Budge?
This is, my amendments are three amendments primarily that refine the sprinkler requirements in residential properties. The language in the ordinance as written is somewhat confusing and uses terms that are not clearly defined. So we jump in and in amendment one, add a definition of the area of construction so that it's clear. We further make it clear that we're talking about the floor area, or the gross floor area of the building that is under construction, and that is the measure, not, you know, because unfortunately, when you just talk about area, which is the way the bill is written, there are about eighty different definitions of area, so we needed to straighten that out. And then we use our newly defined term to talk about what we're, what's going to trigger the sprinkler limits, so hopefully, we've sorted that confusion out.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Budge, maybe you can answer this. I got a, a suggestion this afternoon, saying that for an area-based system, which most of the surrounding jurisdictions use, I'm sorry, the suggestion is to use an area calculation, that the area calculation is based on finished space and not covered porches or decks. Can you speak to whether this ordinance uses just finished space or if it includes porches and decks?
It, I would defer to the, an interpretation from our permitting crew, Mr. Manassa, if you would be so kind.
Good evening, John Manassa, Chief of Code Enforcement, Planning and Zoning. The ordinance does not include porches or decks. That is the, my understanding is the question, porches, what was the other element?
That the area calculation is based on finished space and not covered porches or
Porches and decks don't have walls that enclose them, so they would not be included. If you look at the definition, it's an area bounded by walls. So a deck, porch, covered porch would not be included.
Thank you. I think I discovered that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-5016 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-5016 on third reader?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Peayon.
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Littman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye. The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is O-1-17 Non-Discrimination Foreign-Bourne Residents.
Is there a motion to adopt O-117 on second reader?
So moved.
We'll now go to the amendment section. We have a number of amendments, and we'll do them in which order they appear first. So it's the Alderman-proposed amendments, the Redline-proposed amendments to first reader, the Panel ladies' proposed amendment, and then the Littman-proposed amendment.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the Alderperson's-proposed amendments is the same thing as the Redline-proposed amendments, just a different way of looking at it. So you, the Redline just shows you how the text, if the amendments are adopted, how they would read if they were in the ordinance. The Alderman's-proposed amendments are the ones that actually are the amendments, and if you'd like, I'd be happy to speak to them. Thank you. These amendments all were before the Rules Committee, sorry, it's just blanked out, and were approved by the Rules Committee. I won't take everyone's time by reading all of them. There are a total of eight, nine?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. And everyone's had the wording in front of you. Overall, they were developed after the public hearing on this ordinance and sought to take the, some advice that we heard from the public comments, from our city attorney, and add in language, including, add in Alderman Budge as a sponsor. And so I thank him for that. So the, you have all the language before you. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer any of them. Otherwise, I would move for all seventeen amendments to be approved.
Second. Alderman Peayon?
Mr. Mayor, I would note that seventeen amendments on a two-page-plus ordinance substantially redoes the ordinance. In this case, these were made, I think, less than a week ago. For those of us whose computer here, iPad, doesn't tend to work under regular Wi-Fi conditions at home, I got this today. I don't see how you could expect any of us to be prepared to consider these things on such short notice. This ordinance has been around for quite a long time, and there's simply no reason for this to have happened. The statute isn't the same one that I had and that I've read and studied, and I think that it would be inappropriate to consider these amendments under those circumstances. I couldn't make it to the, to the committee hearing. I would note that my committee, the Public Safety Committee, excuse me, was supposed to hear this, and then without asking from anything or consulting with the members of the Public Safety Commission, the committee, the chair withdrew the hearing request before the Public Safety Committee, and there's some of us who did not get to question the sponsor or anyone else at the committee level. Many of my questions could have been answered at that level, but they're not. As economics chairman, economics, Economic Matters Chairman, I could have requested this... sponsor or anyone else at the committee level. Many of my questions could have been answered at that level, but they're not. Uh, as Economics Chairman, Economics, Economic Matters Chairman, I, I could have requested this, but I didn't think I had to because I'm a member of the Public Safety Committee and I think everybody would have been covered. Uh, when that was withdrawn, it caught me by surprise. I think it caught, uh, one of my colleagues by surprise, and, uh, I haven't had the opportunity to, uh, question really anybody in any detail at the committee level. Uh, I, I think it'd be inappropriate to vote on any of this tonight.
Alderman Peon, obviously I share your concern, and I think it's not only unorthodox, probably unprecedented, to be moved to a committee and then have it not heard. I think one of the things we've seen over and over again is that people on this council constantly ask me to refer stuff to committee, and normally it only has to go to one committee. As a matter of courtesy, I usually do that and extend it. For one, I didn't want this to come on the agenda tonight. I had originally planned to it come two weeks from now. Not that I'm not gonna vote for it, but just to go through. So I think it's irregular that some of these amendments haven't gone to committee, or the amendments themselves have not gone. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I did request that this legislation would come to the Public Safety Committee. As most people realize, we hear an awful lot of testimony and sometimes multiple times on the same piece of legislation. So, in an effort to not have the community have to come out on several occasions to speak to the same bill, I requested that it be withdrawn and invited anyone who wanted to come to speak to attend the Rules Committee, which is when we analyzed all of these amendments. So, the community, the announcement that went out to the community made it very clear that members of not only the council, but the community at large, could join us at the Rules Committee and have an opportunity to speak. And if I remember correctly, the good Alderman was in the building during our Rules Committee meeting and did have an opportunity to get our amendments. Thank you.
That may be the case. I think it still goes to the fact that it went to committee and was removed, and like we've done many times, from one-ten compromise reach to the City Doc Master Plan, more public hearing is never a problem. Alderwoman Pendel Charles?
Yes, not to be disrespectful, Mr. Mayor, but I, I looked through all of my emails and I don't ever remember seeing, uh, where the email was sent that, um, it was gonna be removed from Public Safety. So, I mean, I could be an error, but I looked and looked and looked, I couldn't find it until it was on the pu, on the Rules Committee agenda, and that's when I was first notified about it.
Removing from Public Safety wasn't my request. Anyone else? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two thanks. One, uh, these amendments were all part of the, uh, public record for anybody in this room or beyond this room to read for the, over past week, is, was part of the Rules Committee agenda. It's part of, um, we have these iPads to look at it anytime we want, or you can get on the web anytime anyone wants to review these, um, review any of the amendments, and any questions would certainly have been entertained. Furthermore, even if these rule, even if these amendments were not made prior today, which they have been, it is certainly, uh, very common for members of this council to raise amendments, make amendments on the floor during second reader. So, the fact that we actually had the chance to, to, um, discuss these amendments ahead of time is a bonus, it's certainly not a requirement. Uh, lastly, a third point is, what, what are the questions? These, uh, these amendments, changes are really, um, pretty, pretty minor compared to what we've done with other legislation. We changed, uh, some wording and whereas clauses, as you know, that, that is, um, not too difficult to discern. We, uh, fixed, uh, definition of discrimination at the suggestion of the city attorney to take out the use of the circular discriminatory, um, discriminatory word in the definition of discrimination, so we fixed that. Um, this is, you have a chance right now, ask whatever questions you have.[874.68][874.68](APPLAUSE).
Well, it sounds like somebody wants to go through the amendments one by one. This is discussion, so Alderman Peon, where would you like to begin?
Um, okay, let me, first of all, how do you, how do you, uh, square this with federal regulations, Title thirteen of the U.S. Constitution? It was something about private action that we wanted to help the, the federal government enforce the law, that you wouldn't do it as a government, but we'll do it privately?
So, if you're, in the midst of a question, I refer to you to the amendment where we specify that a city employee can't use, uh, city monies or, or property to, uh, to ask about enforcement of federal programs. The, um, and I'll also refer you to the exception at the end, uh, it's amendment number fifteen, where we make clear, complying with the provisions of eight USC Section thirteen seventy-three regarding the voluntary exchange of information with federal immigration authorities, provided that the exchange does not impermissibly, impermissibly utilize city monies, facilities, property, equipment, or personnel. So, we make awfully clear, and, and many times over, that if the federal government has a right to be involved, they have that, they, we not, we're not impinging on that right.
Where the many times over, I see it once.
So that's in paragraph six, we-
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, so we have above about, um, all the other exceptions, four, one through four, which all say about a city, uh, employee being allowed to, um, uh, follow enforcement actions and cooperate.
All right, these five, looks like five, six, five paragraphs, I think, based on the latest version of this law that we have that are prohibited. Does the city engage in any of these practices at the moment, even one, single one of them?
Whether, no, no evidence has been produced either way, the, excuse me.
Can you name me one time that the city has done that?
Excuse me.
Any of these things?
Excuse me. No evidence has been presented either way, whether the city has been doing this one way or the other. What we have heard, with, through lots of, uh, evidence, through testimony at both public hearings, is that people are fearful that these questions will be asked, that they don't come to the police when they are victims or, or witnesses to crimes.
Well, I'm fearful if I rob a bank, I'm gonna get caught and go to jail, but that doesn't mean that there's a law setting, you can't-
Hey, we're having a debate, the public had a chance to comment, and we're gonna respectfully listen to each other. You may not agree with it, but you don't need to boo every time. Nobody booed. Earlier, when everyone clapped, we were respectful and let you have your moment. Now is a council's chance to have our moment for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, let me remind you that, all I did was ask a question. Uh, is there any indication that any city employee utilizes city monies, facilities, properties, equipment, or personnel to investigate, enforce, or assist investigation or enforcement of any federal program requiring registration of individuals on the basis of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, or national origin?
Again, this is a, right now, we have a city policy and where the police do not ask about those things. The issue is that it's only policy and not law.
All right, now, city employee inquire, is prohibited from acquiring- Any individual about the immigration status of any alleged crime victim, witness, or other individual who contacts any city employee seeking assistance unless such inquiry is required by law. Have you checked with the, the county-states attorney or the city police chief, either present or former, with regard to this issue?
Met with the, uh, the former city police chief many times.
Okay, and, uh, what did he, could you cite me one example where the city police have ever done this? Say, the last fifteen, twenty years?
What he described was where the city police are trying to be, uh, helpful, and, and so they do ask in certain circumstances, so, and so we, we flushed out where the circumstances where they want to know about, um, immigration status, and that's the origin of many of these examples, the exceptions.
So, the answer is the city doesn't do this right now, nor have they ever done it, at least in recent memory, correct?
No, I think I gave you a different answer.
I'm sorry?
No, I think I gave you a different answer.
Well, maybe you better explain it again, then.
Okay, I met with a-
That's what I got.
Okay, I met with the city police chief, former city police chief, on a number of occasions. We flushed out, uh, with him and Mr. Hudson, the various, uh, times they come into contact with these issues. We heard their concerns, we came up with, uh, exceptions with help from the, uh, law office about, uh, how to address those concerns. We reviewed what the, uh, law office came up with, and they were satisfied.
Okay, I'm not completely sure I understand your answer, but I'll accept it. The, uh-
That's good, Mr.-
Did you talk to Mr. Ratt-
Mr. Prosecutor, thank you.
The county-states attorney?
I did not.
About whether witnesses coming forward is a problem or Hispanic community?
I'm not sure, I did not, but I'm not sure why it'd be relevant whether the county prosecutor-
Which amendment are you referring to?
I'm sorry?
Which amendment are you referring to? Are we on right now?
Uh, we're on paragraph two of the, of the ordinance.
Oh, I thought we were talking about the amendments.
You're right, we should be. You're absolutely right. Um, then I'll save that for later. The, uh, a city employee utilizes, is forbidden to utilize monies, facilities, property, equipment, or personnel to inquire with any government agency regarding the immigration status of any individual unless such inquiry is required by law. How do you feel about the police for bail purposes requesting, uh, that information?
How do I feel about what?
For bail purposes, bond. Wouldn't you agree that somebody who's not here lawfully might be a little bit more likely to flee the country or flee the area than someone who's not? Don't you think that's a relevant consideration under those circumstances?
Um, Mr. Prosecutor, I don't think that the, we're talking about city employees here.
I'm an Alderman, I'm a retired prosecutor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alderman, that, we're still talking about city employees that this ordinance applies to. How would the, your example, when a prosecutor is asking about bail, how would that apply to a city employee?
Based on information he's been given, or she's been given by the police.
Okay, again, how, how is the city employee involved in that?
Last time I checked, city police officers are city employees.
So, help me understand what, how that would, uh, scenario-
Ask the, ask the person, you know, where, where they're from, are they here legally?
And this, the city, the city police officer probably doesn't know that information.
Well, you can certainly relate what the response was from the defendant, if any. You don't think that would be irrelevant?
You know, I'm not here to be a judge on whether some things can be relevant or not relevant in a court law.
Well, you sponsored this legislation.
Yes, I am here because I sponsored the, the ordinance. I'm not here because I'm gonna be, take the role of the judge and decide what's relevant and not relevant before the judge.
But you've forbidden the city police to give that information, or to ask that information for the benefit of the prosecution?
No.
For that matter, for the benefit of the defense?
Not necessarily, not if it falls in one of the exceptions.
Six of them are bad. I don't believe that it falls under any of the exceptions that I've seen, but since there's seventeen amendments that I've been trying to digest, it's a little hard to tell what's here and what isn't here at the moment. The fifth paragraph, um, the city employee accesses confidential information-
Is paragraph, are you, are you talking about the ordinance again or the amendments?
Well, number five is totally an amendment, from what I can tell. It's in red, all in red here.
You said, you said paragraph five, I'm trying to just follow where you are.
Yeah, it is paragraph five of-
What amendment are you on?
Of section three point five oh point oh two oh, prohibited conduct.
What amendment are you on?
I'm on the one for paragraph five.
Alderman Peon is looking at the redline version.
Okay.
A city employee is forbidden to access confidential information about an individual, including but not limited to that individual's race, gender identification, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, national origin, immigration status, and/or ability to speak English, unless such employee is authorized to access such information and does so solely for the purposes related to their, uh, related to the exercise of their duties as a city employee.
So, what's your question?
Um, if a police officer is questioning an individual, he's not allowed to ask them whether they speak English.[1440.01][1440.01](CROSSTALK).
That paragraph refers to how they have access to information, doesn't ask what, doesn't say whether, that particular paragraph doesn't speak to whether they can ask whether the person speaks Singlish.
Okay, apparently they can't ask what language they speak, so they can't furnish a translator for that person?
Again, that paragraph does not limit, that particular paragraph does not limit what they ask. That paragraph limits what confidential, what confidential information they can access.[1484.65][1484.65](CROSSTALK). Was there a second to my motion?
Just a moment, please, Your Honor.
Please.
Your Honor, I did it again. It's been a long time since I've done that, Mr. Mayor.
That's right, I could use the promotion. Um, I think one of the questions Alderman Peon is alluding to is how are we gonna cooperate, um, with the state, with the police if it comes up? Obviously, the whole point of this legislation is going on at a national level. People are fearful that the city's gonna get involved in immigration, raids and everything like that, and I can tell you it's not the case. Not just as a matter of law, but as a matter of policy. Uh, from the day I've been in here, the city's never done any deportations, and we're not going to in the future. We have other important things we do with city government, you know, police, fire, fixing potholes, so, it, the grand level, this law doesn't change a lot of things. I think the Capitol summed it up best. Laws go into effect to change things, to help things, but they also said it's also legitimate to pass a law that just highlights existing legal protections, which I believe this does. And that's the reason I said I would support it if my amendment passes. I don't mind agreeing to something that we already do as a matter of policy. I think Alderman Peon's is, how do we cooperate if there's a criminal and the government says, "We need to work with your police department to find this person, legal or illegal." And if this handicaps our police department or cuts off our federal funds, I think that causes a concern. And Alderman Littman, I mean, Alderman Peon is trying to go through and find situations where that might be happening. Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I think I came to rules that night, and we painstakingly, as, if I, if my recollection is correct, six of us, six councillors were, were, were here at rules that, that evening. Uh, we went through each and every one of these amendments painstakingly. I am so sorry, my colleague was not here. Uh, Housing Human Welfare Committee, uh, it's comprised of myself, Alderman Littman, Alderman Budge, both co-sponsors. Makes no sense to send this to my committee. As the Chair, I would say no, and send it right back. It, it's, it, it wouldn't go very far. I don't think the outcome's gonna change, we're both sponsors. Uh, I, I, I think that it's, it's ready right now to be voted on. If there are other amendments, that, uh, then, then we need to, we need to deal with the other amendments. Uh, this is a moot point. Uh, I mean, really, if there are other amendments, we need to vote on those. These that's gone through committee, it's done.
I would say it's not a, I would say it's not a moot point going through amendments, especially seventeen on a piece of legislation this important.
Well, I, I-
And I would say, we can deal with this argument another time about committees rejecting it, but that's unprecedented for this body to do.
Yeah, well, well, right now, I'll stop short of calling a question, but I am telling you, I'm not far from doing just that.
Mr. Mayor, I have, believe I still have the floor, and I have no further questions, but I would reserve the right to, assuming that the amendments pass, I mean, before we take the final vote, I would have, I do have some more questions on the statute and on the ordinance in general.
Understand, we'll go through each amendment, and then we'll have a discussion on everything that's been amended. Alderman Pfeiffer?
I was just gonna say, that, that's, it sounds like we're moving forward, so that's good. I think the question was, if Alderman Peon had specific changes to any of the amendments, maybe this would be the time to think about any secondary amendments he might have to Alderman Littman's amendments. Or you just would rather stop?
It's a little hard to do that on, on what I, for me, was short notice, maybe not for other people. By the way, I was in the building that day for most of the day, but I did have to meet the furnace man who's putting in a new furnace in my house at three fifteen, and I was back before five o'clock for a finance committee meeting that, that eve.
Just the one question I had on amendment number eleven, um, about the city shouldn't use any money to cooperate, that exempts law enforcement efforts, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, just wanted to make sure. So, if there's no other questions, I think it's been moved and seconded to vote on the amendments as a block. Is there any final discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
Any abstain?
Abstained.
We will now go on to the next-
Okay.
Sure. We'll now go to the next set of amendments. Actually, I'll let, Alderman Littman, I'll let you go first on yours. The Littman proposed amendments. Okay, be happy to. Sure. We'll now go to the next set of amendments. Actually, I'll let, Alderman Lippman, I'll let you go first on yours. The Lippman proposed amendments. Okay, be happy to.
Um, after the public hearing, and after, sorry, the rules committee meeting, Mr. Leahy addressed a scenario that, um, was potentially far-fetched, but again, suggested that we try to address, and the scenario was, if a, um, call came into police dispatch, and the call described an individual using, um, some of these descriptive words, and whether that dispatcher, who's not a police officer, who would have met other exceptions if it was a police officer, but dispatcher who's not a police officer, could, um, pass on those descriptions. Certainly, that's not something we want to, uh, get in the way with, and so what you have is, um, the Lippman proposed amendment, which I believe is, um, I don't know if they were co-sponsors to it, but anyway, uh, it, it adds one paragraph, page three, line thirty-five, and everyone here has it both in paper in front of you and loaded to your iPads.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, I, all of us here on the, uh, in the council have the, uh, your proposed amendment, but there are a lot of people out there who do not, uh, and watching this by television, and I request if you would read it.
Be happy to, thank you, it's a good point. It inserts paragraph number seven, "Soliciting a description of a person involved with a criminal investigation, or in any other way engaging in the investigation of an alleged criminal offense, where a suspect or other individual has been described in part by their race, ethnicity, or gender, provided that such investigation complies with all relevant local, state, and federal law."
Motion's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
There's one last amendment, which is my amendment, and I'll read it now. For the public and everyone, I think it's probably the shortest amendment we may have had at the city council chamber, and I did that by design, and I'll explain why. Basically says, "This chap, this chapter shall not cause, not cause, the city of Annapolis to become a sanctuary city." Let me explain my rationale behind this, and why I think it's important, before I vote yes on this legislation. We've had a lot of people reach out to us-
Second, by the way, second.
Thank you. We've had a lot of people reach out to us on this legislation, some for, some against. Some of them are city residents, some of them aren't, but we're all one community, and people's voices matter. So let me just begin from the beginning, like I said earlier. I will not tolerate discrimination that take place while I'm mayor and the leader of this city, and I fully support everyone's right to equal protection under the law. While the non-discrimination legislation undergoes changes, some of which we're seeing today in the amendments, I've offered my amendment that states, "The city chap, this chapter shall not cause the city of Annapolis to become a sanctuary city." If my amendment passes, I'll vote for the legislation. Let me explain to you why this is important. If the city of Annapolis is perceived as a sanctuary city, we lose federal funding. And where do we lose the federal funding, is in terms of law enforcement. Our police department will be greatly affected if we're seen as a sanctuary city. It's very simple, it's very easy to say, "We are not a sanctuary city." So as the federal government goes through all of the cities that are and are not, if they see one line that says, "We're not a sanctuary city," they say, "That's great, we can move on from here." That's why it's extremely important. I think the law on its own doesn't really change much, and in the sense, gives some people a false sense of security by passing it, but as I said earlier, it's legitimate to pass a law that already exists, the practices that are in place underneath. So I think it's extremely important we pass this, because there's also this perception out there, I'm hearing things that, you know, if we pass this, then we're gonna become a sanctuary city. And I've stood up and defended it and said, "This legislation would not create a sanctuary city under our interpretation." It would, for many other people, be considered as a sanctuary city. So I think it's very important, we pass one sentence that says it, it gets it out of the way, everyone can go home happy, and it sets the record state, straight, and it's clear and understood by everybody. So it's been seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Lippman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the, uh, the motivation to, uh, to support this legislation. I have concerns about this amendment. Nowhere else in this legislation do we refer to sanctuary cities, it's an undefined term in city code, it's an undefined term in this ordinance. In fact, if the, uh, in the scenario that you described, if the federal government was to do a search for sanctuary cities using those terms, this amendment would actually cause it to load up, and, uh, and, and therefore be something that might trigger a further analysis. I think the, uh, important view that both you and Mr. Leahy have, have offered, is not what we say we've done with this ordinance, but what actually what we are doing with this ordinance, and whether or not we say we cause, uh, we want Annapolis to be a sanctuary city, the issue is gonna be, what does the body of the ordinance do? So, I, I can't support this amendment for those reasons.
Let me just say, I think you make a fallacy, and while I respect you taking the work to bring this on, just by saying we're not a sanctuary city, somehow that means the federal government, we're gonna fly higher on their radar. I think what brings the profile up is the TV cameras and everything else, and all the press this has been getting, so I think we're already on the radar. Not to say this isn't a good piece of legislation, but by simply saying we're not, I think makes it crystal clear to everyone else, and if it's not the intent of this body in the future to make us a sanctuary city, I, I don't understand what would be so difficult in not passing this. Alderman Payon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I share my colleague from Ward Five's concern. I, I think more likely, however, it shows the intent, and the intent for us not to become a sanctuary city, that's important for me. I, uh, I agree with almost everything that you've said. I, hey, look, it's up to, it would ultimately be up to somebody else to make the decision whether we're a sanctuary city, we meet some phantom definition that, to my knowledge, doesn't totally exist at the moment, but I think this would be a way of showing that it wasn't our intention to do that. I mean, you know, we spent a good part of this meeting listening to HACA, who are they funded by? Federal government, I think that would be affected far more even than law enforcement would be. But, I, I think that, uh, your point's well taken, and I look at it as an intent, statement of intent, as opposed to a legal conclusion, and whether it, we get, I mean, yeah, I think every city's gonna get the federal government's attention whether we like it or not, whether it's appropriate or not, and I don't think this will really affect, uh, things one way or the other, other than to show that it wasn't our intent to do anything other than what the law says.
I think you're right, and Alderman Lippman, we've talked about this before, how do you define a sanctuary city? How does the government define it? Even cities that are sanctuary cities, they don't explicitly say it, so if you look at Baltimore, San Francisco, nowhere in their law does it say, "We are a sanctuary city, and we won't cooperate with the federal government." They just write it in nuance, and it's a matter of policy. So I think clearly stating it solves the problem. Is there any other discussion or comment? Alderman Budge?
I think that at the moment, the question of what is a sanctuary city is a little bit, has been clarified, uh, by the President's executive order. In the President's executive order, uh, he states that a sanctuary city is one that does not comply, uh, with section thirteen seventy-three of the U.S. Code. Uh, and because of the President's, because of the specific wording of the President's executive order, uh, we included amendment fifteen, uh, which says that, um, we, this chapter, this, uh, bill does not prohibit complying with, uh, section thirteen seventy-three. Um, I would offer a suggestion. One thing that I find problematic about your proposed amendment, um, is that it says that the intent of the entire ordinance is to not be a sanctuary city. Period. And that's not the intent of this ordinance. The ordinance is intended to accomplish something completely different. But it is, at the same time, uh, imperative to us that we not be a sanctuary city. And I wonder if you would consider, uh, modifying your amendment, uh, to add your language to the, um, alter person's amendment number fifteen, which talks about section thirteen seventy-three, uh, so that both the purpose and the legal language are married together.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I appreciate the, um, the logic behind it as well. So, I can't make the motion, so if someone could move that for me?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Alderman Pfeifer?
I, I, um, I'm a little concerned about this in general, I, I just think getting in the business of basically saying, "We're not this, and we're not that," and, to, Mr. Budge said it more eloquently, but that, this, this is not sort of the process that we usually go about to try and accomplish things legislatively, and to your point, I think that you put this on there, stamp that on there, and hope that then folks in Washington will basically look past us and look at other folks. I'm not sure, it's a very effective legislative technique, and you said that other cities have moved towards nuance, and I think in this case, we'd probably be well-served by a little more nuance, but, um, if Alderman, if Alderman Budge wants to attach it to the appropriate sections, so at least it sits in the right place in the bill, um, I guess that's fine, but I'm not sure this accomplishes a whole hell of a lot, but...
I'm willing to make that, um, compromise or attach to that section of the code. Alderman Lippman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The executive order referred to sanctuary jurisdictions, not sanctuary cities, so I still believe the term sanctuary cities is an undefined term, and I think we're treading dangerous water using it.
The, the executive order explicitly uses the term sanctuary city.
But they, do they define it?
Yes. The executive, eh, I can whistle it up in a few minutes if you care to, but the executive order, uh, basically says that, uh, cities that do not comply with thirteen seventy-three, per ends, sanctuary cities, closed per ends, shall have their funds withheld. Well, jurisdictions or whatever, but it, it's, it clearly links sanctuary cities to, uh, thirteen seventy-three.
I think Alderman Budge brings up a good point, and has done research, talk about jurisdictions are probably including counties as well, because certain counties have done this, so it's almost, not semantics, but if you wanna put a sanctuary city slash jurisdiction, it's accomplishing the same thing. Alderman Payon?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think actually, that particular reference, I would say the same thing about that as I would about the term that you used in your amendment, and that is that, um, I think it shows intention to comply with it, but it'll ultimately be up to somebody else to decide whether or not we in fact have done that. I, uh, uh, that's one of the amend, I mean, I, I certainly didn't oppose that amendment, because I think it's a good thing to have in there, but it doesn't ultimately decide the issue as much as we would like for it to, they're gonna look at, you know, the whole big picture anyway, so, I think that's a good place for it, and, uh, I think, okay, maybe there's a more arguable term, but I'm not aware of it. I think, uh, what you're doing is, uh, what we're doing by this whole thing, by adding your amendment to this, would be effect, effectively saying, "Hey, look, we're trying to comply with the law as best we know it, and, you know, this is the way we're gonna go about doing it." And again, it's ultimately gonna be up to somebody else to decide whether we're doing
I agree, and I think stating that bluntly, because the federal government's got thousands of cities they look at, or if they're looking through legislation, their law department, and one says, "We're not a sanctuary city," I think they put in a pile and move on to someone else.
God knows what's a good language to use with government these days.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, um, I, I, I think, I think the Alderman went through greats change, great pains, not to use the word sanctuary at all. Uh, I, I didn't vote for Donald Trump, uh, and I'm not, I'm really not afraid of any of his, his thought processes. A sanctuary is two blocks over here behind this wall, the Brigade of Misshipments, they have a sanctuary in my mind. Uh, that, that's definitely a sanctuary city over there, we can't go there anytime we want, we can do what we want over there, uh, he ain't gonna stop their money. So I mean, what, what, I, I don't, I don't understand, but, I don't understand, everybody in this room has a right to have, enjoy life, liberty, and the pursuit, pursuit of happiness in Annapolis, Maryland, and that's what this legislation does without the word sanctuary.
I guess I'm a little, how do you consider the Naval Academy a sanctuary city? I, I've been there, but I think the, a military academy with honor and prestige is very different than a San Francisco version of a sanctuary city, so I think you're comparing apples and oranges. Does anyone else have any discussion? Well, part of this more than just the federal government is also the Annapolis community at large. You know, there's a lot of people that didn't come out and speak, the people that send emails and talk to us that said, "We're fearful Annapolis will become a sanctuary city." This is the first step, so I think between the federal government, our fellow citizens, this just shores it up and puts on the record that we won't be one. Moving forward. Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Mayor, I carefully analyzed the emails that I received, and I noted that almost every one of the ones that mentioned sanctuary city were from people who did not live in Annapolis, and in fact, I think there was quite a concerted effort by a particular group to deluge us with that kind of email. On the other hand, uh, the email I got from people who did live in the city were overwhelmingly in support of this, so I, I'm not willing to be stampeded by, um, some rump movement out of who-knows-where in Maryland, or whatever part of the country.
So, as mayor, I get a lot of emails, and there's a lot of people from outside the city that supported this, and a lot of people from outside the city that didn't support this. Same thing, uh, city residents and non-city residents, so I did receive messages from city residents opposed and using that word, so, part of this is just clarity and giving people comfort. Is there anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye. 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 All opposed? Madam City Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Abstain.
Alderman Budge?
Point of, uh, clarification first, that, um, what we are voting on is my proposed amendment to your amendment. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Mayor Payon.
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Penato?
Abstain.
Alderman Lason?
No.
Alderman Lippman?
No.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeifer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
The motion is defeated.
All right.
The amendment's dismissed.
Now we're doing the original amendment, which I will read again and strongly suggest we adopt, because we're gonna give people a false sense of security, not only that, risk federal funds, it just says, "This chapter shall not cause the city of Annapolis to become a sanctuary city," and I'll add slash jurisdiction. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Madam City Clerk?
Abstain.
Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Payon ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Penato?
Abstain.
Alderman Lason?
No.
Alderman Lippman?
No.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeifer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
The notes have it. Is there a motion to adopt oh one seventeen on second reader as amended? Second. All those, any discussion? Alderman Payon?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to see how this ordinance, uh, changes anything that's going on right now. I mean, I, I, I asked the, the main sponsor several times, "What are we doing now, what are we doing differently?" And, uh, you know, the best that he could come up with was that, "Well, I'm not aware of anything that's, that's happened before." I mean, it sounds for all the world to me like a solution looking for a problem. Nobody can deny that, I mean, I don't really have any problem with the city not doing these things, I just wanna know why we have this ordinance in front of us, because for all the stories we've heard, very compelling stories, I might add, from different people and members of the public, um, do you think people real- um, do you think people realize that individuals who are here illegally are not one bit safer tomorrow when we pass this? And I think it will pass tonight than they are right now? I can tell you, the answer's no. And it is, uh, I think unfortunate that people seem to be attempting to, uh, you know, cup gloss over that. And that the very individuals it's designed to help, it may be luring into a false sense of security, which they should not have, uh, if they are here illegally. I, I don't really object to most of the things that are in here. They're, they're common sense, they are, uh, I mean, many of them are at least. I don't agree with everything, but I, I, I don't, um, yeah, I mean, I, I understand why the wording is here, but if we're not doing any of these things they're complaining about, why are we passing a law? Why are we, I, I, it doesn't make any sense to me. As I said, I think it is a solution without a problem. I don't want to create any problems. I don't, I don't know what else I can say at this point, other than, uh, I don't know what the motivation is. I don't know, uh, I, I, I'm not going to accuse anybody of grandstanding because I don't think that's the purpose, but I don't think it's doing anybody any good, period. Now, it doesn't prohibit private companies from doing this. It doesn't prevent Anarundale County employees from doing all this. And I think it could be and, and possibly be a, uh, in a, well, I don't think it'll be an impediment on law enforcement in any way, shape or form. Uh, my experience with the prosecutor's office for thirty-seven years is that the individuals that are largely the subject to this are way more likely to be victims of crime than to commit crimes. Let me make that clear. I made an unfortunate comparison a few moments ago and, uh, the, uh, my experience with, in the criminal milieu, dealing with, um, uh, our, many of our people from south of the border is that they're much more likely to be victims of crime and preyed upon than they are to commit crimes. Let me make that clear. They, we don't have any indication that coming forward and reporting crimes is an issue. Uh, didn't even talk to the state's attorney, who would be the one that knows intimately whether or not this presents a problem. I, I don't, I don't get it. I mean, I, I'm not particularly against a lot of what this says, but it just doesn't make any sense that we would create a law where a problem doesn't exist. Thomas Jefferson, founder, uh, well, we all know, most of us know who Thomas Jefferson was, uh, and his attitude in so many words, uh, paraphrasing it, but less government is the best government. Why are we legislating on an issue that apparently is not a problem or hasn't been a problem? I don't understand that. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would answer Alderman Pan by saying, we have volumes of code and reams and reams of paper with rules and procedures, even though nobody has done anything wrong. And that this is simply stating and emphasizing things that we want to emphasize, not to prohibit. And if, uh, so I don't understand your analogy. It seems like a false analogy. We have codes about employee personnel, even though, as far as we know, no one has done something wrong. So, uh, I, I don't see how this is any different than that.
But we don't have, I'm sorry.
No, Alderman Pan?
But we don't have gobs of laws that are, that just seem to have been dropped down out of heaven for no particular purpose. But there's a purpose that can be articulated for each and every one of those. If you'll listen to my answer, instead of playing, that, that each and every one of those personnel regulations, there's a reason, an articulable reason for them. Nobody's articulated a reason for a non-problem being, uh, uh, an entire piece of legislation being necessary for something that is not and has not been a problem.
Sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue.
We have had a roomful of people talking about a problem.
I haven't heard one person say that the city-
Sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I want to thank the cosponsors for their, uh, support. I want to thank Mark Rodriguez for pushing and supporting this, uh, joint effort and to members of the public for coming out so strongly and bravely to support common sense practices that will make us all safer. This legislation originated eight months ago at the request from the community during a work session, and that is why we're here tonight, well before the term sanctuary city became a hot topic. Those in the community that live in fear are members of our community and we want them to be a part of our community. We heard over and over that this fear is real. The community has told us over and over that this problem's real and we have to trust the community. This legislation does not create a sanctuary jurisdiction, does not use public money to expand services, but rather implements a common sense measure to ensure safety for all residents and imposes civil disciplinary action for city employees who create the, those unnecessary barriers. Annapolis must be a place where we draw strength through our differences and where all feel welcome, respected and included. We value a long tradition of drawing talented people from all around the world to our community and we must continue to vigorously encourage the open exchange of ideas and perspectives. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, one more thing.
Alderman Kirby?
You know, if it, if, if, if this does no more than help the children go to school tomorrow with dry eyes or maybe tears of joy, uh, then so be it. The legislations-
The legislations needed because somebody saw a need, uh, so I disagree with Alderman Pan also. Uh, if things continue to happen the way they are happening down the road, it'll probably be a necessity for us to do some more things in the city of Annapolis. Uh, but being threatened about federal dollars isn't one of them and we're prepared to vote.
Alderman Pan?
Well, again, Mr. Mayor, I bring up the question, how does this change one single thing?
Alderman Pfeiffer?
I was, I was hoping we could end with Alderman Littman's nice statement. I know he had, uh, he's obviously, he's done a lot of work, but in, in thinking about your question, Alderman Pan, I, I think about, um, as a body, we do, we mostly do one thing, which is we deal with the inner workings of the city in passing legislative fixes that are clear, to, to your point. You change this, you need money for this, you figure out how to authorize this program. But we also do a number of things that are more in this vein. I think, I think in the time I've been on the council, we've passed lots of ordinances showing support for a certain cause. I remember we did the ones about, about the hospital and the, and the cardiac unit. We take positions for things that are value statements that we think are worth supporting and we often do that around this day. So, I think, I think you're just sort of thinking about it in the wrong context of what we, and it's understandable, but that's mostly what we do. And that, and really what this is about is about trying to connect with a certain part of our community and the experience people are having and trying to be responsive to that, trying to be open to that and trying to be, to make our community more just and more fair in how those folks interact with the city. And I think it's an important thing. I was happy to be a cosponsor and support it, so, um, I think that's probably an important way to look at it.
Does anyone else have any comments? Let me make one final comment. I said at the beginning, I will not allow discrimination to take place in my administration. That's been the case whether this legislation passes or not. I have a sense, and I think you all do, this legislation is going to pass. And for those of you who don't vote for it, when the name-calling begins, it doesn't mean if you vote against us, you're voting for discrimination. It's like saying, if you vote against the Patriot Act, you're not patriotic. Or if you vote against the City Doc master plan, you don't care about City Doc. I wanted to support this amendment and I still do. I asked for one simple thing, and that was to add the words, "We will not become a sanctuary city." There is a fear, just like everyone out here has a fear, that Annapolis is going down this path, that the federal government will view us in this way, and I will not let Annapolis be a sanctuary city. So, if there's no other comments, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor on second reader, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? No.
Epstein.
Is there a motion to adopt O-117 on third reader? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan Lady?
No.
Alderman Buzz?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Alderman Penal Charles?
Epstein.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye. The ayes have it. We've come to order, we still have an agenda to get through. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is O-dash-eight dash seventeen, the conveyance of twenty-eight square feet of land associated with one oh eight, one ten West Street.
Is there a motion to adopt on first reader? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, uh, O-eight seventeen has already been adopted on first reader on the consent calendar. Um, I request the, um, consent of the council to vote upon it on second reader tonight. Um, as the, uh, it relates to a land transaction- It, it relates to a land transaction, um, that is due to close between two private parties on the fifteenth of this month, uh, in two days. Um, it pertains to a, uh, title problem on some properties the city ended up having a piece of, uh, many, many years ago that was forgotten about, um, and which came up in the title search late in January. And so, I beg the, uh, councils, do I need to suspend the rules? Uh, approval to, I motion that we suspend the rules to vote on this on second reader.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-eight seventeen on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is, oh, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pan Lady?
Aye.
Alderman Buzz?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
Aye.
Alderman Penal Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item? All right. We'll take a five-minute break and reconvene. Back in session, Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on our agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pan asked that we remove an item from the consent agenda, that is, R-dash-three dash seventeen, Council Compensation Commission Recommendations on second reader.
So, now that'll come before us. Is there a motion to adopt R-three seventeen on sec, accept R-three seventeen? Alderman Kirby?
So, I think, I think, I think that he took it off the consent calendar be, because I, I think he felt that this would, in fact, approve all the raises, which is not the fact, correct? What this, what this literally does is accept the ru, the guidelines of the commission, but it's not into effect. We would have to reconvene to vote any type of conversation.
At your next meeting, you should, um, be receiving an ordinance that has to go out per the charter to, to change, if you decide to change any of the fees, they only can go down. You can only decrease, but you can't, um, increase any of the recommendations from the committee. And that ordinance should be ready in the next couple of meetings for your approval. And you need the ordinance to change the code because it goes into the, um, um, certain sections of the code.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Pan?
Well, once we, uh, accept their recommendation, as Alderman Kirby says, uh, we're doing, as we seem to agree that we're doing, I've never known the council not to, in fact, vote that, put it in the budget and vote the, vote the pay raise. And that's my reason. I, I don't think it's appropriate personally, but other people may disagree, to vote for a pay raise for myself under, when it's, we're dealing with government, government money and taxpayer money. And that's, that's, uh, why I, uh, wanted it to, uh, come out and so we could at least have, have this discussion and any other one we wanted to have. We may not have the opportunity at a later point.
Well, I'm not getting a pay raise, so it's mute, but I think the city clerk can clarify.
Yeah, Alderman Pan, the, um, resolution is actually the city council's acceptance of the report from the commission.
No, I understand that.
Yeah. And they had to make recommendations for the salary for the-
Alderwoman Felason?
Yeah, this speaks to the next city council, not the sitting city council. So, we're not voting for raises for ourselves unless you get re-elected, that is, but you got to do that first. So, so, you know, shouldn't feel guilt about that because it's not the case.
If there's no other discussion?
Don't count the money yet.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
No.
There's one no, the rest are ayes. The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda? Oh, roll call. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pan Lady?
Aye.
Alderman Buzz?
Aye.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Alderman Penal Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Epstein. The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Legislative Actions on First Reader, beginning with O-dash-five dash seventeen, Equal Protection of Law in Annapolis.
Is there a motion to adopt O-five seventeen on first reader? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a discussion. And this goes for R-seven seventeen. First and foremost, I would like to offer my sincere thanks to my colleague and fellow barrister, Alderman Jared Littman, for proposing a piece of legislation that took foresight and yes, courage, and for bringing it to the forefront of our city. In these days and times of discomfort and uncertainty, nevertheless, Alderman Littman has made all of us think beyond ourselves. Here and now, I would like to make this perfectly clear. It is not my intention whatsoever and in no way, shape or form do the two pieces of legislation that I am proposing run contrary to Alderman Littman's and to my, to our overall mission, which is to ensure equal protection under the law for all under our U.S. Constitution. Simply put, it's just another way of how two or maybe even three legal minds approach an important issue. Based upon the many emails and correspondence that I have received over the past several weeks from many of you out in the audience who have now left, I would suspect that many persons in the community believe that I have very little or even no experience working with or interacting with the immigrant community and that I don't even care about the immigrant community. Nothing could be further from the truth. So, based upon these emails and correspondence, I feel compelled to directly respond here on the record to the communication that I have received. And I would be derelict in my duties if I allowed this opportunity to respond pass me by. After prosecuting juvenile and physical child abuse and companion domestic violence cases for over twenty years upon my retirement as a prosecutor and supervisor in Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, in two thousand and four, two months later, I was hired full-time as the program manager for the Office of Minority Health, with the Anarundale County Department of Health. There, for one year, I supervised and worked with an extremely dedicated, passionate and skilled staff of five, three Latinos, one Asian and one African-American. Our job was to make sure that we got the health messages out to the Latino community, the Asian community and the African-American community. To this end, my staff and I worked directly and very closely- To this end, my staff and I worked directly and very closely with many churches and pastors in Annapolis and throughout Anaronda County, as well as with the Latino and Asian businesses, and where these organizations hosted many of our events and activities. The highlight of our department's work was the first-ever county-wide immigration forum that my office hosted in 2005, which was verbally acknowledged and recognized as unprecedented, specifically in the valuable and diverse information that was provided, and in the overwhelming of number of respondents and participants. For over 11 years, I have been employed full-time with Anaronda County Public Schools as a School and Community Relations and Outreach Specialist, initially assigned to the central office. For the first six and a half years, I was assigned to the Office of Equity Assurance and Human Relations, and then to the Office of School Performance, where current Superintendent Dr. George Allata was my immediate supervisor, and then on to the Office of School and Family Partnerships, still at the office, the central office. There, I worked on several projects within the ESOL, ELL program, in other words, the English Speakers of Other Languages, or English Language Learners programs. Working on these events and programs with the ESOL School Liaison and Specialists who are base of the schools, this work simply became an extension of the work that I have been doing at the County Health Department. Since June 2012, I've been assigned full-time to the Frank Herbert Harmon Elementary School, which is located in West County, right around the corner from the Maryland Live Casino, doing the same work that I did at the School Systems Central Office. At our school, we have 800 students and a staff of approximately 100. Our school is extremely diverse. Out of our 800 elementary school students, 30 languages are spoken, either by our students or within their households. Out of the 125-plus schools in our county, it is my understanding that we are the most diverse school in the county, and I interact with these students and/or members of their households on a daily basis. Concurrently, at my school, I'm working on three projects with another community that I have never worked with before, namely, the Middle Eastern community, or more accurately, the South Asian community. We are jointly working on a Parent Resource Night in March, a Taste of Asia Family Learning Night in May, and a Moms Group scheduled to begin for the 2017-18 school year. Needless to say, I've learned a lot over the past several months, working with this school staff member who is Muslim from Pakistan. Additionally, in Ward Three, when Ms. Karen Klein became the new Executive Director of the Center of Health, or Centro de Ayuda, in February 2016, about two months later, we had a very productive first meeting for two hours. Since then, I've communicated with her on at least a weekly basis. And most recently, on December 22nd, 2016, in City Hall, Ms. Roxana Rodriguez, our city's Hispanic Community Services Specialist, she and I chatted briefly but very productively about the resources and strategies that are available for the purpose of assisting our Latino residents, or offered to help her in any way that she sees fit. Moreover, Ward Three, the ward that I represent, has a growing immigrant and Latino population. Although I would not be considered an immigrant under any of these pieces of legislation, as you can readily see, I've had a variety of experiences working with or interacting with the immigrant community consistently and intimately for over 12 years. Even though I'm an attorney, I recognize the fact that this area of the law, which requires the crafting of a constitutionally sound piece of legislation, is not my forte. So, at this point, I hearken back to what my dad first told me about a friend of ours. Dr. RST Allen, now deceased, was our family physician, as well as a member of the Maryland Legislature, and he was selected by the President to serve in a top post in the federal government, which was unprecedented at the time. And Route 665 here in Annapolis is named in Dr. Allen's honor. My dad often quoted what Dr. Allen once said, "If you don't know something, ask someone who knows more about it than you do." I always took that as being great advice. This body voted unanimously for Mr. Michael G. Leahy to serve as our city attorney, a position many years ago that was offered to me and which I respectfully declined. I am well aware of my own limitations. Upon reviewing Mr. Leahy's extensive resume, it was obvious to me that a person who is, quote, "A legal professional with significant experience as a senior executive attorney, regulator, and policymaker with a solid track record of implementing practical solutions to complex financial, operational, and regulatory questions for clients, including individuals, local governments, and Fortune 500 companies," unquote, is certainly qualified and capable of drafting a piece of legislation that is constitutionally sound, as well as developing and articulating legal arguments in support thereof. Moreover, Mr. Leahy is much better equipped to do this than any one of us sitting up here on this dais. So, in this light, I took Dr. Allen's sage advice. I asked Mr. Leahy to draft a piece of legislation that is constitutionally sound and whereby legal arguments can support it. Admittedly, Mr. Leahy and I don't always agree, but that's truly the nature and the essence of the law. I will now ask Mr. Leahy briefly to provide us with an overview of the ordinance 0517, Equal Protection of the Law in Annapolis.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Given that we took things out of order, congratulations to the council on passing Alderman Litman and the other sponsors' bill. I do not believe the ordinance 5-17, which is titled Equal Protection of Laws in Annapolis, is contrary to your intent or to the action you've taken this evening because it does two things. First of all, since the law you've just passed is applicable only to city employees, it strikes me that it is equally important that in the Human Resources Title, we incorporate a definition of equal protection, which I have amended and added a definition, which was equal protection means in accordance with the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. The city shall treat a person or class of persons the same as it treats other persons or classes in like circumstances. Basically, what that says is that we acknowledge and accept the Fourteenth Amendment. The meat of the ordinance is in Chapter 3.12030, where it would specifically add a requirement that just as the Human Resources Director currently has every new employee sign a statement saying they understand they are not to discriminate, and that they accept the responsibilities that go with that. I believe, in light of the fears that have been expressed and your commitment to fundamental fairness, it would also be equally important to have every employee upon employment sign a statement that they understand what equal protection under the law is, and that they will implement their duties as city employees cognizant of that fact. So, that's the purpose and the extent of ordinance 5-17.
Mr. Leahy, would you just sum up, would you believe that that ordinance is constitutionally sound?
I believe it is.
Thank you. After reviewing Alderman Litman's legislation, and based upon my variety of experiences working with and interacting with the immigrant community consistently for over 12 years, namely, the Latino, Asian, and now Southeastern communities, I sincerely believe that we could take this legislation even further. Nevertheless, as an attorney, I knew that I needed to recognize and be cognizant of the current climate of our country and acknowledge the rapid and unprecedented decisions that are being made by the new administration. And critically looking at this from a practical standpoint, we certainly don't want to end up wasting our city's time and vital and limited resources in unnecessarily having to defend something that we should not have to, but must, in order to gain or maintain any benefits that are rightfully ours. As I see it, I don't want to have to be put in the position of paying for outside legal counsel, which is what it could come down to, compromising our city's resources when we will need our city's resources to address possible and/or probable and/or likely matters in the near future, such as infrastructure needs and flood mitigation downtown in Ward One, road repairs in Animal Heights in Ward Two, beautiful and additional park amenities in Kingsport in Ward Four, summertime recreational opportunities for our children at the Pittmore Recreation Center in Ward Five, new sidewalks on Barbara Lane in Ward Six, traffic and safety studies developed in Ward Seven, and public safety concerns in Ward Eight. So, I realize that any legislation proposed needed to be constitutionally sound. Clearly, the resolution that I have asked Mr. Leahy to draft was as a result of my extensive work with the immigrant community over the past 12 and a half years. I immediately recognized a need beyond the ordinance. I suggested that no more than nine members serve on the Equal Protection Commission, which is the resolution. Without question, my first choice to lead the commission as chair is Mr. Mark Rodriguez, who was here earlier but has since left. That would be a no-brainer. And my suggestion to serve as a co-chair likewise is a no-brainer, Ms. Roxana Rodriguez. The resolution provides that the mayor and the city council receive written quarterly reports from the commission publicly submitted that monitor and ensure the extending of equal rights and protections to all individuals, specifically recognizing and publicly reporting to the mayor and city council on a quarterly basis, the culturally diverse contributions of foreign-born residents to our city's social, academic, religious, cultural, and economic life in Annapolis, as well as reporting to the mayor and city council on any pertinent human resources matters or issues in general, of course, not violating any personnel or privacy rights. And I am very comfortable with using this Alderman Litman's original language as the foundation of the work for this commission. I can envision the other seven remaining commission members, all of whom I have interacted with or worked with professionally on some level, namely, in county government, Ms. Maria Casasco with the County Health Department, Mr. Carlos Camino from our city's Police Department, Mr. Joe Hudson, who has assisted Ward Three greatly, with the Center of Health, their Executive Director, Ms. Karen Klein, with Anaronda County Public Schools, Ms. Monica Lopez, a local pastor, and a person savvy within the human resources arena. I can vouch for each one of these persons on a personal level, their professionalism, their ability to work together as a team. This team covers social, academic, religious, cultural, and economic life in Annapolis for our immigrant residents, the language that Alderman Litman uses in his original legislation. With this ordinance 0517 and its companion resolution, R-717, we would be satisfying all parties and interests. Specifically, the resolution provides us with a mechanism that allows us to have a consistent and a public awareness on the progress of our immigrant community, a direct pulse on the community, and an opportunity to shape a community in the public arena, along with addressing other issues that many of you raised in your emails to me, based upon the persons in the audience and out in the community. Yes, I listened, and I heard you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I invite your support of these two pieces of legislation. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor on first reader, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, we were speaking about the ordinance. She has already--
Incorporated the resolution.
--talked about the resolution, but since it's a separate item, I, I think we should address that, that the next item on the agenda is R-7-17, Equal Protection Commission.
And the same testimony that I just gave would be incorporated in R-717.
I refer 0517 on first reader to the Public Safety Committee and the Rules and City Government Committee. Is there a motion to adopt R-717 on first reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, free.
Yes.
Alderwoman Pendell Charles?
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for the kind comments in your, in your talk. I'd say, actually, really, just a brief question. The nine members, potential members of this commission, have you asked them and gotten their--
No, I have not, but that was just a suggestion based on the people I've talked with. No, I have not talked to any of them.
I realize we're just on first reader. Certainly, there's no requirement. I just wanted to know.
But if anyone in the audience knows them, or they can vouch for them as well, but no, I have not asked any of them.
No, it's not a matter of vouching for them, just--
No, I have not.
Didn't know if they were on board.
No, not at all. I consider them stellar folk, but no, I have not asked them.
Thank you.
It would be premature.
Any discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present? Oh, I refer to the Public Safety Committee and the Rules and City Government.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda's been completed.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.